If we could please introduce ourselves, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Bridget Doherty, I'm the Communications Manager.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Michael Fraven, Legal Counsel.
Thank you all so much, I'm Stephanie Summer Odomas, President of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. We will move forward, we have quite a few things on our agenda today, and number one, our comprehensive COVID-19 report by Commissioner Greg Kesterman, welcome.
Well, thank you for having me Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity. It's probably been about a month since I was last here, and I'm proud to say that since I was last here, the COVID case numbers seem to be on the decline. The high peak for this current wave was around the beginning of June, where we were seeing about 220 cases per day. Today, we're at 184 cases, so we're happy to see that decline. When you look countywide, cases seem to be fairly well evenly distributed across the county. You may recall, last time I was here, the east side of the county seemed to be impacted the heaviest, that quickly spread to the west, and now things are kind of calming down countywide. As far as what we are seeing, we are predominantly seeing still the BA2.121 variant, although you can see the, at the bottom of this graph, this is for Region 5, the BA4 and the BA5 variant picking up. Another way to look at it, you can see on the bottom two graphs here, the uptick in recent weeks, so I would anticipate in the coming weeks, predominantly in Hamilton County, when you get COVID, you'll be getting an Omicron variant, either the BA4 or the BA5 in coming weeks. How this looks with regards to hospitalizations, we are continuing to see just a very slight upward increase in both hospitalizations and intensive care unit admissions, although as you may recall throughout the pandemic, these are kind of a delayed indicator, so cases just now in the last couple of weeks have started to come down, and so I would anticipate over the next few weeks, if we continue to see the downward case trend, that these will come down. Like to also put this into perspective, while we're at 118 hospitalizations today in Hamilton County and in the region, we were as near, almost to 1,000 cases at the beginning of the Omicron variant back at the end of last year, beginning of this year, so we're nowhere close at this point to seeing anything like what we saw at that period of time. ICU admissions today are at 13, and individuals on ventilators are at 7. As far as deaths, because we are seeing such low numbers within the ICU, we are seeing fairly low numbers of deaths occurring in Hamilton County. About one death occurs every eight days right now, and once again, you can compare that historically, the largest peak on the chart was back when we had the Delta variant here in Hamilton County, we had less options for treatment. Even the most recent Omicron variant, we did see an increase in deaths, although we had better treatments and better opportunities for health outcomes related to COVID-19. Moving on to the Centers for Disease Control, their metrics, we are at 168 cases per 100,000 in Hamilton County, that is considered high for the total level of cases, although as you know, we are now using several metrics to help determine COVID-19 mitigation measures, and at this point, Hamilton County remains at low transmission overall for COVID-19. Comparing this to the rest of the state, all of southwest Ohio continues to remain low, which is good news, I think that's a positive thing for our community. You can see some counties in Ohio at medium transmission and some at the higher level of transmission, community transmission, but overall, we're looking pretty good. The last slide that I have for you today deals with COVID-19 vaccinations. I think the most exciting thing happened last week, for those parents who have been waiting for a long time to be able to vaccinate their youngest children, those individuals six months of age to five years of age are now eligible to receive either the COVID vaccine from Pfizer or Moderna, and so that work has started last week. My clinic at the Board of Elections and out in the community have already vaccinated 400 youngsters, and we will continue that work in the coming weeks ahead. Anyone who is looking for a vaccine location is encouraged to go to testandprotectsNC.com. There are numerous pediatricians around the county that are offering the COVID vaccine for the, for the youngest age group that is now eligible, and that's important because I think sometimes parents are most comfortable going to their pediatrician for that type of care, so we continue to promote that. We will continue to be in the community, we'll continue to be at the Board of Elections, our clinics continue to have all of the vaccine options available. Last week, the Moderna just became available also for those ages 6 to 12, we have that available at our clinic. Anyone seeking a booster over the age of 50, or if you're qualified because of an underlying health condition, our clinics are able to accept you. If you just want to come in because you have so many questions, because the information got confusing, we're encouraging people to do that as well, so lots of vaccine efforts, and I'm really happy with the, with the team's work on that. That is all I have today, I'll happily take any questions.
Thank you so much Commissioner, I was going back to the second page where COVID-19 cases per 100,000 population by zip code, we've talked about this before, in those little pockets of blue, I think it's the second page, yeah, okay, and so those zip codes, can you see what those are, where the little, where the blue is?
So...
I think I can, I think I can, yeah. It's a 45001.
Okay.
45051, and then there's two more, there's 45147.
Okay, I see that.
And 45111.
Okay, and so why do, why do we think that little pocket around surrounding all that red is occurring, what do you think?
Sometimes it's a function, like on the zip code on the east side of the county, in that it shares population over in Claremont County, and so that can impact the overall number and the rate per 100,000. Sometimes it's because of the demographic of that zip code, there's not many people in that zip code, but it varies, but it typically is not any one specific reason that causes it. When we were doing census tracts, sometimes it was literally because there were very few individuals residing within that census tract, in fact, sometimes you would see a census tract with just one business and no residents, and so that can impact it as well.
Okay, thank you, and really excited about the low community transmission on your other sheet, and even though we still need to know that it's out there, and we need to take precautions as you've said, but to see that we're on a low community transmission is great, so...
That's right.
Yeah.
Just keep keeping sick at home, and I think we'll continue to be in good shape.
That'll work, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice President Reese.
Thank you for the presentation and all of your work, I just wanted to take a step back, one of the things that I think, and maybe I'm doing a little bit of bragging on Hamilton County, but that's okay, we can, the, the decision by the Board to keep funding for testing, for decision in our partnership with you to keep the websites up, to keep the community connection, to be able to have a place for not only testing but also the vaccine. Just wanted to take a step back for those who are watching, because I know we kind of went through this pretty quickly, there are obviously a lot of questions on the vaccinations that are available, and in a moment, I'm going to ask you if you just kind of step back and talk about what is available. I had a lot of questions for people who, there's still people getting their first booster, and then there's people getting the next booster, and I want to thank you because at the Relief-a-thon in Woodlawn that happened this past Saturday, where we had people all the way down the street and around the building, there were a lot of people that came for the vaccine, I saw the babies, I felt so sorry, because you know, the babies don't like needles, I don't like needles either, I kind of wanted to like, give her another chance, maybe tomorrow, you know, but one, she was a trooper, she took it, and then the other babies seemed to look to her, and then it was like, no more crying, they're like, she's our leader, so, but a lot of parents that came up and brought their children, but senior citizens have had questions, and they go other places, and there's a cost, or they're asking for their insurance, and they're like, hey, we have this stuff free, so just wanted to give you opportunity again to talk about where you can get it, what we have available, so that those who are watching kind of understand.
So I think the first thing I'll say is, the public health clinics run by Hamilton County Public Health and most health departments, at least in southwest Ohio, all of the clinics don't take insurance, at least for my office, so feel free to go to the Board of Elections or one of my mobile sites, and we will not collect insurance information, we collect personal information like your name, so that it can become part of your health record, we don't run your insurance. Most private providers, like a pharmacy or a doctor's office, will, if you have insurance, run your insurance, and that's a way to recoup their costs, so it is something to be aware of, if you're uncomfortable providing insurance information, certainly please come to one of our clinics. And I feel like, yes, the second part, and I don't recall...
Yeah, the second part, you talked about Moderna, talk about what's all available.
Yep, so we at Hamilton County Public Health are still offering all three vaccines, we offer the Janssen vaccine, which is not widely offered, and it's discouraged for people who are healthy and willing to get a normal vaccine, to get either the Pfizer or the Moderna, but we still offer it in case somebody has hesitancy or wishes to continue to get boosted, or potentially has an allergy to one of the other two vaccinations. At our office, we also offer the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine, both of them, you know, there's a series of shots, depending on which vaccine you get, it varies the total number. We also offer the booster, all of them have now a booster that you're supposed to get after that initial series, and then for some individuals who meet certain criteria, including over the age of 50 or underlying health conditions, there's a fourth dose, and so we offer that at our clinics as well.
That's awesome, because I know a lot of people are asking about the fourth dose, and again, I just want to thank you, your partnership in the community, and this weekend with Relief-a-thon, a lot of questions, parents, your staff is phenomenal, so I think these are positive things, that people know that we still have these things available for the citizens of Hamilton County, I think that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you, thank you Commissioner for being with us again. I wanted to focus also on the vaccinations, I remember back, I don't know how long ago, year, year and a half, when we set this goal in collaboration with the Health Collab of 80% in this community, and we all thought, huh, wonderful, ever going to reach 80% vaccine for the most vulnerable populations, and when you look at your chart, that's exactly what you, we, but you, have done by way of these percentages, I mean, for the 70 to 74 age group to reach 96% vaccinated is astounding, and really to the credit of yourself and the partners in the community that helped get the vaccinations out, so I just want to applaud this effort, because so many of the demographics are above the 80%, many, many are above the 70%, which is kind of the standard goal, I think, so I just wanted to recognize that. Mention the Test and Protect is still the place to go to find out where you can get a vaccine and get a test, if need be, and reemphasize that you're open at the Board of Elections and other sites, you just need to go to your website to find out where you can get those vaccines, so just for the viewing public and anybody that's interested, you are still out and about delivering vaccine. I too went to the Relief-a-thon in Woodlawn, and I know some of the team from the county is here, good job, I know it was packed, and your team was there, as always, steadfast giving those vaccines, and so it is really a credit to your department and to your employees for being out there amongst the community to make sure everybody's got that access, so thank you.
Thank you, and if I could just add, you know, the County Commissioner's commitment throughout this entire pandemic, particularly since we're talking about vaccines, the dollars that you have spent on vaccine coordination and those types of things have really helped Hamilton County as a whole have more providers than I believe many other locations, and that's, it's that partnership and that collaboration that has allowed us to have access and to allow for families to pick what type of vaccine provider they want. In many rural communities in Ohio, the Health Department is the only option for COVID-19 vaccine, here in Hamilton County, that's not the case, you can go to pharmacies, we have four health departments, you can go to your doctor's office, pediatrician's offices, and that's really because of the commitment and part of the County Commissioners to help make that possible, so thank you for, for your effort and your contributions as well.
And thank you so much, we had a very brief discussion as a board of whether or not, not how much more we wanted to put in to Test and Protect, we knew we wanted to do it, we're not sure how much, and we continued to add funding for that, because we didn't know what the future held, so better safe than sorry, for sure, so thank you for all that you do. With the Health Collaborative, we're still looking at the possibility of including maybe closing the health gap to continue to provide the education to our residents as it relates to the vaccine and what it means, and, and take away the fear, I think that closing the health gap has done for several months and done a great job with it, so we're looking at that also. Thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good day.
All righty. Okay, we will move to item two, TLRC Levy Review Report and Recommendations, I know our Administrator was going to say a few words, I know Lisa and your committee have been working very hard with the hearings and, and all of that before you got here with us, and would you like to say a few words?
Sure, Madam President, just very, very quickly, and as Lisa gets ready for her presentation, so, just immediately for the folks watching at home, one of the, one of the critical services that the Hamilton County government does is not only the operation of everything you see in terms of the Sheriff, Board of Elections, the court systems, et cetera, but also is the oversight and the management of the, of seven voted property tax levies that are, that are voted on regularly by the electorate in the county, and the certificate, and the, and the Board's certification of those levies to the ballot on a regular basis. We have the Children's Services Levy, the Developmental Disability Services Levy, Family Services and Treatment, the Zoo Levy, the Indigent Care Levy, Mental Health Levy, and the Senior Services Levy. So on a regular basis, the county employs the services of a Tax Levy Review Committee to, on behalf of the taxpayers, review those levies, make sure, evaluate the work programs of those levies, and ultimately make a recommendation back to the Board as it relates to certifying an amount to the ballot for the continuation of those levies in the future. So this year, there were three levies that were, that were up for the ballot in November, and the TLRC has reviewed the Indigent Care Levy, the Mental Health Services Levy, and the Senior Services Levy. And so Lisa Webb is the Assistant County Administrator who is in charge of, amongst a whole host of other things related to criminal justice and public safety and social services, the oversight and management of our levy process, so she's here today to give a report out on the, the work of the Tax Levy Review Committee and the, and the next steps moving forward. I will also leave it to Lisa to introduce and to offer thanks, more thanks to the members of the TLRC who spend just a huge amount of time reviewing these levies on behalf of the public, and reviewing just document after document to make a recommendation to, to the Board on behalf of the taxpayers, to make sure the taxpayers' dollars are being spent in the most effective and efficient way. So with that, thanks to Lisa for all of her work on this, and I'll turn it over to her for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This presentation is the culmination of over six months of levy reviews, we got started in early, or should we say, late November, with hiring consultants and getting, having the meetings beginning in January to get this process started, can I get the presentation? I'm also joined, and I will get to it in a minute, but by the Chair of the Tax Levy Committee, Gwen McFarland remotely, as well as the three subcommittee chairs for each of the reviews that we're speaking on, that's Jeanette Hargraves, Jenny O'Donnell, and Dr. Ed Herzig. The TLRC was appointed, oversees all the county for voted tax levies that the Commissioners approve for Hamilton County property owners. Their job and their charge is to create the balance between the need for funding for various organizations and the burden on Hamilton County home and business owners. They were established in 96, and since that time, the TLRC has reviewed and made recommendations on all county property tax levies under the authority of the Commissioners. These are the subcommittees here, I just mentioned each of the chairs, but I'd be remiss not to go ahead and list the members of each of those committees as well, I mentioned Jeanette Hargraves as the Chair of the Indigent Care Levy, which was along with Bob Furnier and Gwen McFarland, Ed Herzig is the Chair of the Mental Health Levy, along with Christie Coons and Bishop Ennis Tate, and Senior Services Levy was chaired by Jenny O'Donnell with John Silverman and Mark Quarry. Each of these nine individuals have attended meetings over the last six months, touting countless, probably hundreds of hours of meetings, the Tax Levy Committee meetings, which I know several of the Commissioners have, have viewed at different points, especially as we had some Zoom options early in the levy process, but as well as subcommittee meetings and individual phone calls and meetings with the consultants throughout the process, all voluntarily, all of their own time, away from their families and their own jobs. I also point out to them, this is the, this is the big one, three, every five years, we review three levies, it is a lot of work, and I'm very thankful for everything that they've done to pull it together. This is very small to read, because it is so very large, these were all of the public meetings of the Tax Levy Review Committee, beginning January 5th and culminating last Tuesday on January 24th, I'm sorry, January, I'm sorry, June 21st, with the TLRC meeting when they made recommendations on their final reports. I'm going to go through each of three of the levies, Indigent Care to start, followed by Mental Health, and then Senior Services, overviews and programs within the levies, and then I will turn it over to each of those subcommittee chairs for any updates on their recommendations moving forward. So to start with, and feel free to interrupt me at any point with any questions on these, the Indigent Care Levy encompasses all of the programs that you see within here, it supports indigent healthcare services in Hamilton County and has been around since the early 60s. I'll go through each of this, kind of a high level of notes between each of these agencies. UCMC, Cincinnati Medical Center, this is the number of individual Hamilton County residents that they have served with healthcare through the Indigent Care Levy, they've provided healthcare to nearly 40,000 Hamilton County residents in the last five years. You can look, you can see the difference here, the tiny pink line at the very bottom is institutionalized, that's care for inmates through the Hamilton County Justice Center, as well as the yellow for the uninsured Hamilton County residents, and you can see a larger uptick in the underinsured Hamilton County residents, where this levy is really providing that gap for individuals that had insurance but potentially had a catastrophic illness confront their family, and this is allowing them to receive that medical care. Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center, similar, you can see the chart with the same, the same lines between insured and underinsured individuals. I will note, you'll see the chart drop down significantly in fiscal year 2021, that is the hospitals fiscal year, so that actually is from July of 2020 through June 30th of 2021, which is much of the COVID period. During that time, and you'll hear this noted as we go through each of these levies, there's been a public health emergency, which has allowed individuals to stay on Medicaid, individuals and families, no one can be disenrolled during this period, it is currently still extended, we do not yet have an end date, but when it does, we will be, we will have issues in the county throughout, really throughout the country, of individuals that had been receiving care that will now need to receive it from additional sources, and likely take a dramatic impact to all of our local social services levies. Sheriff's medical staffing is also a large portion of the levy, the levy provides for our inmate medical staff, our medical services within the Justice Center, majority through a contract with NAF Care, as well as deputies that are involved in the medical unit, the psychiatric unit, their overflow pods, as well as male and female medical and psychiatric pods within the Justice Center. Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, their treatment funding, the levy provides just under $2.5 million towards treatment funding for individuals through the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. It's important to note that this treatment is not allowable through the Mental Health Levy, we will talk about that in a minute, that levy is specific to mental health services, this funding is specific to treatment services, mainly substance abuse treatment, provided through Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. Homeless Healthcare Services, the levy provides approximately 30% of the cost to run healthcare services within the five homeless-to-home shelters, when those shelters were built, part of the newer services offered were onsite medical services within the shelters that had not occurred in the past. Those five shelters are the Shakely Center, Parkway Center, City Gospel Mission, and the Shelter House Baron Center and Shelter House Hatton Center. St. Vincent de Paul's Charitable Pharmacy, the levy provides currently $150,000 a year towards the charitable pharmacy, the charitable pharmacy is the only pharmacy in Hamilton County that provides free pharmaceuticals to individuals that cannot afford even a $5, $10 copay for their prescriptions. They are able to leverage county dollars, as well as other dollars that they've received from other sources, and, and free pharmaceuticals that they're able to get from drug companies to allow for this to happen. You'll note, for every dollar spent of the tax levy over the last cycle, the pharmacy was able to leverage it for $59 worth for pharmaceuticals for Hamilton County residents. In addition to the pharmaceuticals, they also provide wraparound services for individuals, especially regarding diabetes medications, you'll see 97% of the patients that they've worked with are connected to primary care, 51% experience a reduction in hospitalization, 56% reduction to emergency visits. to emergency visits, 23% tobacco cessation, 64% of established patients improve their diabetes outcomes as well. There are three public programs within Hamilton County Public Health, the largest of that being the County Tuberculosis Control Clinic that, that we are state mandated to operate. The levy also provides funding for the SAFE program, which is stigma-free access to harm reduction services, supplies, and testing in the community. And new in this last levy cycle was the Oral Care Initiative to work toward decreasing oral health disparities and access to dental care and treatment. Additionally, the levy provides for the Alternative Interventions for Women program and potentially based on recommendations, the Alternative Interventions for Men program. It's a day program that individuals are referred to out of the courts and is operated by court clinic. It also provides some funding for Off the Streets, which is operated through Hur Cincinnati, formerly Cincinnati Union Bethel, providing shelter services and treatment for women with histories of sexual trafficking and exploitation. And the levy provides some funding within Hamilton County Probate Court for civil commitment processing of mentally ill or intellectually disabled, and the services associated for that, as well as some guardianship investigations program. Jeanette? I will turn it over to Jeanette Hargraves for the recommendations on the levy.
Good afternoon. I joined the tax levy review committee five years ago, and this was the very first levy that I worked on, and I'm happy to say it's in much better state today than it was five years ago. We are not going to have to be recommending the cuts that we had to make five years ago, so our overarching recommendation-
Can you just speak up a little?
Sure, sorry.
The sign people are having a little-
All right. Our, our overarching recommendation is renewal with no increase. Having said that the levy's in good shape, it still faces a couple of challenges. The first of those is the consequences of the pandemic. While all of our agencies made good use of the federal money, that money is getting ready to stop, but the needs of the agencies are not. They are going to be serving more clients. There's going to be more emotional needs. There's going to be more medical needs, and they still have to do it with the same pot of money. So I anticipate that by the time we get to the mid-cycle review, there's going to be issues that need to be addressed. The other second, the second issue that is facing the levy is the sheriff's medical, specifically the inmate staffing. There, we have proposed that there needs to be cost containment in that area. That particular line item has increased every year since it was added to the levy, and the levy is, is getting to the point where the levy is going to have difficulty absorbing those costs. We outlined our specific recommendations in the report. With the help of the sheriff's office, we identified some areas where costs can be contained today, specifically overtime. We recommended that overtime be removed from the levy and be, an additional funding source be found. We also recommended that the sheriff's office start coding overtime so that they can identify exactly what overtime belongs in the levy, and then perhaps at the mid-cycle review, we can determine what's the best way to go forward. We're also recommending that with respect to inmate medical and inmate staffing, that it be capped at 38% of levy expenditures. Because the, because this levy is very unusual in that it has so many different agencies, they were added at different times, in different circumstances, there's not consistency across the levy. Some agencies have contracts, some don't, some have memorandums of understanding, some don't. The subcommittee, after reviewing all of the way the different agencies interact with the levy, determined that there needs to be consistency across the levy. Therefore, we're recommending for non-contract agencies that memorandum of understanding be put in place for every agency. And in our report, we outlined specific items that should be included in those memorandums. During this levy review of this cycle, we learned that the Mental Health Recovery and Services Board had a significant amount of unspent funds remaining from 2018, and we're recommending that those funds be returned to the levy, and also that process for dealing with unspent funds be included in the memorandums of understanding when those are implemented. Although we're not requesting a increase for the levy, there are specific programs within the levy that we're recommending have increases. The first of those is the Hamilton County Board of Health, we're recommending, I'm sorry, Hamilton County Public Health, we're recommending that there be an increase for tuberculosis control because the medications that they need for treatment have gone up significantly, and they anticipate that they're going to go up even more significantly in the next 12 months. We're also, we're also recommending an increase for their SAFE program. That is the program that supplies syringes and Narcan to the Hamilton County public. They open, they, I don't know, did they open another location?
We were adding a stop.
They added a stop, and because, so they could serve more Hamilton County residents, and because of that, their costs are increasing. So we recommended an increase for that. We also recommended an increase for St. Vincent de Paul. They have opened a second location and have increased hours at both of their locations, and along with these increased hours, there's increased costs. We also recommended an increase for strategies to end homelessness. Last, the last levy cycle, their funding was cut with a lot, there were across-the-board cuts, and their funding was reduced by 200,000. They are going to be facing a lot of challenges in the next couple of years with the aftermath of the pandemic, and because of that, we're recommending that their, that funding that was cut be restored. Finally, we're recommending an increase to the Hamilton County Probate Court to pay for a second guardianship investigator. I believe all of the commissioners are aware of the need for a second investigator. We asked our consultants to do a deep dive as to whether that program could fall under the indigent care levy, and they did confirm that that would meet the requirements of the levy. Any questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Even though the levy is not going to be increased, you, you mentioned several increases. Would that come from the money that was not spent that you mentioned earlier?
So that funding would come from the return of the money from the Mental Health Recovery and Services Board, and also for the cost containment strategies for the sheriff's office.
Okay.
And there is a chart that lays out all of the, the different agencies.
Okay. Thank you so much. Why don't we see if there are any questions for this presentation? Did you have any questions specifically?
I did.
Okay.
Thank you for the presentation and your very important volunteerism on a very important issue. Being that this would be my, my first vote on this levy, I just wanted to take a step back on a couple of things, make sure I had a clear understanding. So the initial purpose of the levy, when we look at University Hospital, I guess, would be, or UC?
Does UC, the levy originally covered University Hospital, which is now UC.
Yeah.
Then Children's Hospital was added, and then there's been various agencies added over the years.
Gotcha. And I wanted to just highlight on here that, that expenditure, if you will, has been, or will be the same for University Hospital. There's no increase for the-
That's correct.
There's also no increase for Children's Hospital.
That's correct.
And I just was a little, I'm a little concerned about that, and maybe we could talk offline after this, but I just want to make sure that the cost there is covered. Where, you know, the emergencies, we're able to cover those. We talked about COVID, for example. UC now has a facility for those long-term care for COVID. I just want to make sure that that, you know, you don't have to have the greatest insurance to get the help, because I think that's what we're going to see in the next couple of years, the real effects of COVID. We don't have the research. We don't have anything to measure because we've never faced anything like this, and they're already over capacity with it. And I just want to make sure that people who can get help and continue to live, that they don't have to make a decision because they just don't have the money to participate in this. So I just wanted to bring that up. Same thing with Children's Hospital. You know, we've got our children, and we're doing some things to try to, as we're learning, but I, you know, there may be some side effects. There may be some children that had COVID and need help might be rushed to the Children's Hospital. So I just wanted to make sure the core of what we're doing is not compromised and that it is enough funding to handle the demand that we have seen or will see soon. So I just, you know, just wanted to get a little more clarity on that. The other thing, I just had some questions on some of these other areas. Before I get to other areas, let me just say, I love the charitable pharmacy. I think there's a, even a larger need for that. And one of the things I, as, you know, we move on levies, I think we have to also come together a better way to communicate what we're doing, promote what we're doing. People know that that's their levy dollars that are doing these things before we have to renew a levy. And then people feel like, oh, okay, this is what the levy does. But on the charitable pharmacy, one of the things that I had wanted to look at was mobile, being able to go mobile with the charitable pharmacy, maybe in conjunction with our 513 relief bus as we're going out there. We're seniors and folks who can't afford pharmacy. That's really was the initial idea that the bus came from. But, you know, I want to see something that we can do to take it to them. And I think before, there was like a, a card, a discount card if you lived in Hamilton County. So I just want to see the charitable pharmacy doing what they do, but expanding those services out there, because with inflation and so forth, people are really struggling to try to make decisions about medicine, which is life or death, obviously, and whether or not they can pay their rent. So I'd like to make sure that we have enough for the charitable pharmacy to be expansive and be mobile with other partnerships. So maybe that's already here, but I just want to make sure that we have that included. The other thing that I had a question on, just some of these other areas, when we get into the mental health, which we're going to hear from later, some of these things, I was just wondering, why are they not funded under mental health versus indigent care? When indigent care, we have, you know, it's a large range of need, and I don't want to get away from the original purpose, which is direct health services at the hospital, at UC Hospital and at Children's Hospital. So I don't know if you could talk about that, but whichever one, but we have a lot of things that we keep adding that's kind of, to me, in the gray area of other levy dollars instead of these. So maybe I'm listening, just like to get better clarity.
Well, on the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, if my under, if, correct me if I'm wrong, that is for substance abuse services that cannot fall under the Mental Health Levy.
Okay.
Those are the recovery services portion of Mental Health and Recovery Services Board when they merged, when the Mental Health Board merged with Addis years ago. Those are the, I'm sorry, those are the services that, that were, would have formally been funded through the Addis Board. And when a Mental Health Board merged with Mental Health and Recovery, became the Mental Health Recovery Services Board, we have the Mental Health levy, and then we had a small portion of levy services that were funded for the Addis Board that are the ones that are now labeled Mental Health and Recovery Services Board funding. But those are specific for substance abuse treatment programming, which are just not allowable under the Mental Health Levy, which is specific for mental health services.
Okay, when you say not allowable, aren't we writing the new levy? Are we not-
No, so we're renewing the levy, the ballot language for the current levies.
Okay, so we can't add anything new. We're stuck with this for ever and ever and ever?
We are within the confines of the levy ballot language for renewal levies. So the confines of the ballot language for indigent care is for health and hospitalization services. I don't have the specific wording, but it references the hospitals as well within that ballot language. The ballot language for Mental Health and Recovery Services, that I actually have, the operation of mental health programs provided by the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board.
I just want to put that, maybe it can't be this type, but put it on the list because we're squeezing over on the, on this side.
Mm-hmm.
Putting everybody, addiction, mental health, everybody's over on the hospital side.
Right.
And hospital was, you know, direct services from health perspectives, and it just seems like it's a squeeze over here where we have extra money with money that we've put in the budget. Of course, it's not forever, but our money will be, is good for four years. The American Rescue money is good.
The ARPA, yeah.
And this gets renewed how many years?
Every five years for this levy.
Yeah, so it seems like this year, we could do something more and not have it come out of this levy money, but maybe I'm misunderstanding it, because I'm thinking we're squeezing everything down. We're rushing everything you could think of over here, and I could think of a gazillion things, because obviously your health, we could put checkups in here. We could put, you know, everything in here. I had surgery on my knee. I could put that over here. I mean, it's just too much squeezing out of the, the health thing at a time where we don't know, COVID, the, the effects of COVID is getting ready to hit, and we got money at least to help us for the next four or five years. And then next time, we get ready to renew the levy, we would have, you know, then we would have to look at these things. But I was just wondering how, I'm trying to figure out, how could we do more instead of squeezing out? We got more money than we've ever had. It's even one time, but it's five years. That's a good one time, four or five years. So I'm just trying to figure that.
How to maximize the levy dollars that we have.
I'm trying to get more. I want, I want to do more. I want to do mobile. I want to do more. I want, I like what you're doing with diabetes. I want to, you know, I have different people who have called me about the diabetes strips. I want to get senior citizens. I want to take the charitable pharmacy out to the people.
That's fabulous, yeah.
Nettie Worsham, she calls me almost every week about her diabetes strips program that she just does as a, you know, herself. She wants to know what can we do. I want to try to see how we do more, but I don't see us doing more. I see us taking a little small part of money and cutting it up more. And then we got this ARPA money that we did a great job with.
Many of these programs came from, out of commissioner initiatives-
Yes.
-in prior levy processes. Charitable Pharmacy is a prime example for that. The same with medical care at the shelters. Those both came out of commissioner initiatives. Off the streets came from commissioner initiatives. The same with the oral care program. The, and some of these go farther back that I don't even recall how, where, and when, but I imagine they were commissioner objectives at the time. So the key is what the commissioners' priorities are, and then seeing if there are ways that we can build programs around those. And we'll certainly get to that, I think, when we talk about senior services, because there were those three new programs that also came forward as priorities of the commissioners to figure out a way to fund.
No, I get that. I'm, I'm just looking at some, some examples. If I see SAFE program in my mind, I'm like, well, why is that over here? Maybe I misunderstood it. Why is this community-based framework to reduce negative consequences of drug use by providing stigma-free access to harm reduction services, supplies, and testing? And we have money for doing testing. So why would I have it come out of here this year?
Well, this isn't COVID testing. This is-
No, no, not COVID testing. We got money for, we got a lot of money on drug addiction, everything. We got a whole bunch of money getting ready to come down from the state of Ohio. We've now have a, a whole board that we didn't have when this levy was taking place. We got money that we got a lawsuit. We had settlement. We got money. So I'm just saying, I'm, I, I'm not picking on this program-
Oh, no.
-because I don't know it. But I'm just saying, as we're looking at these things, there's some things we got now that we didn't have when we first started this levy. Now we got those things. How do we stretch and say, okay, with this one, you're not going to be in this pot. You over in this pot now. And then this one, now we can put something else over this pot, or we can increase children's or university, where UC Hospital, you know, where the needs are growing. And now we can still do both, but we're able to kind of, instead of looking at it as silos. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Now, maybe I'm wrong. I'm just saying, it's a lot of stuff I know that the committee wants to do, I'm sure, wanted to do, and I just, we, we have other things now. We've got this, all this money coming from the state to us with this fantastic board that we have put together that's going to decide where the money goes. We got ARPA for five years, I believe, and then after five years, then of course, we got to look at it again. And hopefully, maybe the economy is a lot better when we look at it again. So I just wanted to throw that out. There's nothing against the recommendations of what you're recommending. I'm just saying, some of these things, when I was looking at them, I'm like, okay, well, can that be funded over here that we give- well, can that be funded over here that would give some flexibility to the committee to implement a few other things that we may not have been able to do, you know?
And I'll say too, you're at the right time for that. And I, the end of the report is kind of where the next steps are. But really, the next steps are turning it over to the commissioners to raise those exact questions and have those discussions and try to figure out, go from the recommended levy plan to what the commissioners' plan is going to be for the levy over the next month to make those determinations before we put it on the ballot and then go from there.
Thank you. Well, Madam President and Commissioner, I just, I want to thank the committee because I know they're trying to squeeze and stretch as much and all of us are stretching. So I just wanted to make sure that as we're looking at the levy, we're not looking at it by itself. But we have all of these other funding initiatives. And even though people say, well, that's one time, well, that's five years. We come back in five years to see if there's other things. So I do want to thank the committee for being creative and trying to keep the costs down and stretch as far as you can. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Drehouse?
Thank you. Thank you, Jeanette, for being here. And a big, big thanks to the TLRC. I think this particular cycle is the most grueling of all because there are three levies on and the time that you all spend and the energy you spend to understand all these complex issues and then put a recommendation forward. I'm very, very grateful for your volunteer time on this. So thanks for the report. So, so the Indigent Care Levy, I've always had a view of this levy, and I think it's shared by yourself as you presented, related to some of the sheriff costs that are in this levy and the challenge there. Because as those costs increase, it does squeeze down some of the other things that are covered in the levy, including the hospital services. But also, it, it makes it challenging to do anything else in the Indigent Care Levy when we've got that kind of burden on it through the sheriff piece. And, and I can see how significant of a portion that is here. And so I, I don't have that report in front of me. And Lisa, I'm sure you've provided this. I think it would be really helpful for us to see years prior funding as opposed to only years henceforth funding that are what we're talking about here in the levy. You've got it?
Yeah.
Because this is all relative. And so as Jeanette, you say, we've done some increasing, but not everywhere. And so the cost containment that you refer to with the sheriff, I applaud that. I think we, we need to do that and maybe even a reduction at some point in the future. But I, I know that is a recognition of the burden that is placed on this levy.
It is, and I would recommend, if you have the time, to go back and look at the 2017 report and the Indigent Care report before that, I think it was 2014. And we've discussed this issue repeatedly in the levy reports about moving some of the sheriff's funding out of the Indigent Care levy so that more can be done within the levy.
Right, because if, unless we're willing to increase the levy, we're, we're held to what we've got in front of us.
That is correct.
And, and some of the reserves and all these other things that are at play. But really, it's a finite amount of money. And so we can only do so much. And this is what happened in the last cycle when we had heard from, you know, about visiting nurses, about trying to keep folks out of the hospital, try to keep them in their homes and not visit the hospital unnecessarily. There were a number of programs, it was Care for the Caregiver, it was Navigation. I mean, we heard about all kinds of things during the public hearings, but we didn't have the capacity to do anything because there wasn't any money in the levy to accomplish that. So there's always this tug of pull. And I do want to, not to be confrontational, not to you, to Lisa, but when we refer to some of these initiatives that are in here, I, I would not characterize them so much as commissioner initiatives, but rather what we heard at public hearings from constituents. These came up from the public hearings where people said, we've got a need in the community and the commissioners responded to that, what we heard, and tried to fit some of that service into the levy. So I don't mean, I mean, I just want to re-characterize that because I don't, it's not like the commissioners are just thinking this stuff up. I mean, we had extensive hearings related to these levies in the last cycle and a lot of these programs bubbled up from, charitable pharmacy was one of them, that bubbled up from those hearings. So, so Jeanette, let me just say, as far as, I'm going to revisit the sheriff piece. So the, the cost containment, was there any conversation amongst the committee members about further reduction here? And if, if so or if not, why did you land on, or how did you land rather, on these two numbers?
So, interestingly, the Subcommittee for the TLRC, the last levy cycle, is the same as it was for this, looking at Indigent Care. And in our 2017 report, we recommended, I think, we asked the commissioners to consider moving the sheriff medical, sheriff inmate out of the levy. That wasn't feasible at that time, so this time we basically looked, okay, let's look at a smaller subset that could be moved out of the levy. The reason that we focused in on overtime, we got a line-by-line item from the sheriff's office about where were the costs. And overtime had increased 360% over, I think it was a five-year period. So we felt that was an area that could be moved out. Because quite frankly, we only review this levy every five years. We don't have the oversight authority to what is needed to, to make sure that costs don't get out of control. That, the, the committee just does not have that type of authority. So overtime seemed to be a right place to, to be moved out of the levy. Believe me, the TLRC Indigent Care Subcommittee would be ecstatic if other expenses related to the sheriff's department were moved out of the levy because we, we know that there's so many areas that could be invested in, but our hands are tied because, like you said, we have a static pot of money.
Right, well, and, and so I do think, and I'm not sure the administration wants me, hear me say this, but it's true to say that we're in a different place than we were in the last cycle in the general fund. Because we were, we were broke in the general fund during the last cycle and we had no capacity to do anything. We were, you know, we were making cuts everywhere. We are a little bit better, not dramatic, but we are doing better in the general fund because of the sales tax increase that was implemented a couple of years ago. And so we do have a little bit more capacity. Now, we are doing other things, obviously, paying our employees market rates. We're, we've got parental leave policy now, so we're doing all this other stuff. But I do think there's a nexus here between what you're trying to accomplish, which is keeping that at a static number and what the general fund can tolerate by way of those expenses shifting over to a different fund. So I appreciate you incorporating that into your recommendation. I will also be looking at that and having additional conversations. But I think you're right on track, that that's the spot, you know, where we can make a change perhaps and then have a positive influence on these other programs that you note are so important in the community. So I appreciate that.
Yes, and I don't want to talk out of turn here, Lisa can. But one of the concrete examples of something that we could not do in the last levy cycle was with regard to the Center for Respite Care. And so it was moved over to the Senior Services Levy. But what came up in the, the agency's presentations this year is that they're having trouble serving the, anybody under 60. Because now it's in the Senior Services Levy, they can't use the funds to, to serve younger people. And so that is one of the real consequences of this being stagnant and the cuts that were made and things were shuffled around. And, and that is the unforeseen consequence of that.
Right, and just one more thing, Madam President. So yes, and to that point, there were three things that were identified, really, again, through public hearings, that this commission and I think the TLRC wanted to help fund and there was just no capacity. And so we had to be creative and we said, well, so, there is an overlap between seniors and indigent care. And so we tried to figure out where the overlap was and then shifted to the one levy that got the increase that cycle, which was seniors. And so I'm interested in, you've just raised the point that, did it, does it still make sense to have that over in the Senior Services Levy? And if there were to be freed up capacity here, maybe it would make more sense to be in Indigent Care. We were not there in the last cycle and I'm not sure we're there now. And, and I can see what you're saying, but I really appreciate you bringing that up as well. It's something to think about. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments from the comments through my colleagues. And I heard just a little bit ago, unless we want to increase, that we're stuck. And that's not necessarily so because we can move priorities around, which has been mentioned by all of us. And then I heard about the sales tax increase two years ago. We did not increase sales tax. We maintained the sales tax that was there, so I want to make that very clear. And also, I really appreciate how the committee decided to take that extra pot of money and move it to charitable pharmacy and strategies for preventing homelessness. And I don't want to glaze over the part, under charitable pharmacy, where every dollar spent, they were able to provide $59 worth of pharmaceuticals to Hamilton County residents. That's a big deal. And oftentimes, we glaze over stuff, not you, but that's important. I remember going on the tour before the pharmacy was there and how much he wanted that pharmacy for the residents. And so, and he indicated what an impact it would have on the community and it absolutely has. So thank you so much for your work, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. The only thing that I would add as well is five years, you talk about five years ago and how we weren't there five years ago. Five years ago, all of the programs in the levy were taking a 9% reduction to be able to keep the levy stable and not increase property taxes. So it is very nice to come forward and say that we're able to not increase the levy, but fund the programs at the level that they were reduced to five years ago. And in some cases, have some increases and be able to have conversations about moving some funding around, which we weren't able to do really five years ago. Moving on to the Mental Health and Recovery, Mental Health Levy. The Mental Health Levy is specifically for the operation of mental health programs provided by the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. The Mental Health Recovery Services Board provides a wide range of services to adults and children who are mentally disabled and or addicted to alcohol and drugs, noting that this levy specifically is for the mental health portion. The services include mental health and addiction treatment, housing, employment, vocational help and court assistance. It is important to note again, and this is just a rehash of our earlier conversation, that funding from this levy cannot be used for the substance abuse treatment programs. And out of that, the Indigent Care Levy includes just over $2.5 million for those services. The Mental Health and Recovery Services Board contracts with 25 behavioral health organizations and county departments, including juvenile court probation, pre-trial and the sheriff's office, for the provision of the mental health services in the range of $35 million a year. The levy has not been increased since 2008, similar to the Indigent Care Levy. The levy expenditures at the beginning of this levy in 2018 were near equal to revenues at the start of the cycle, but due to the planned use of fund balance within the levy, current expenditures are projected well above current revenues for the levy. That was a known thing five years ago, that the levy was going to be needing to utilize their fund balance to maintain operations through the next five years. And that has just proven to be the case. As you can see, the fund balance continued to decline year after year. 2020, obviously, was the COVID period. I believe some additional supports and funding were the, really, the main reason that that was not going down as well. So the levy fund balance has declined from 20, roughly $25 million at the start of the levy to a projected just under $8 million at the end of the current cycle, so by the end of this year. Mental health in the community overall. The Kaiser Foundation reported in February 2021 that four in 10 adults in the U.S. had reported symptoms of anxiety and depressive disorder. That had been largely consistent in years prior of one in 10 adults. We've increased to four in 10. Key stressors being depression, opiate use, suicide use during COVID pandemic has increased the demand for services as well as significant workforce and personnel losses, partly due to stresses arising from the pandemic, causing burnout and the need to increase pay within mental health services. It's the same refrain that you'll hear when we get to Council on Aging. Senior services, developmental disabilities universally. People providing services are facing increased stressors and demands. Again, the public health emergency is ending. When that does end, we will have situations of individuals covered through Medicaid for mental health services that will, at least in the interim or potentially longer term, need to receive funding through the local levy supports to be able to continue to receive their services. The Mental Health Recovery Services Board has estimated that anywhere between 5,800 and 8,700 Hamilton County residents could be impacted by this. There's also a large demand for recovery housing supports. According to the Needs Assessment, housing supports and housing services were the categories most frequently cited as requiring additional capacity. 61% of respondents indicated need for additional housing and 42% indicated additional needs in housing supports. Agencies providing recovery supports are seeing need to implement waiting lists. The services are not covered by Medicaid and they include housing, mental health peer supports and supported employment activities. Recovery supports and housing are the largest refrain from community providers of the need where the most need is for services. And I will turn it over to Dr. Herzog here for the recommendations from the levy committee.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The, let me start by saying, first of all, we had a very important in-depth review of all the agencies that the Mental Health Services provide and the number of people in Hamilton County that can access these services. Having said that, we also know that they are very well managed. And so I think that's a great positive for the county. When the consultants looked at the satisfaction of the clients, of the people that receive services, it was hugely positive in the 80% range. And you don't see that very much in, in many different things in my field at least. So there are several levy issues. And you were talking earlier about rearranging money or maybe more money. So I'm going to ask for more money. And I'm going to ask for more money based on what you just heard, is that there's a huge increase in demand for both services and then the ability to treat people too. So there's an increase in the need to have practitioners who can help treat people that need these services. Our current levy is at $36.5 million annually. By spending down their carryover down to about $7 million so that if, heaven forbid, the county went broke tomorrow, they'd only have $7 million to be able to spend, which would last three months, maybe two and a half months. We're requesting an increase of $44.9 million to support current operation level of $3.9 million, provide increases for critical needs. Once again, housing, suicide prevention, employment services of $2.2 million. Allow for increases to provide our contracts of $2.3 million and maintain a reserve balance roughly $3 million. As you can see, that's not going to go very far, but at least it's a capital reserve. And so we are recommending a renewal with an increase total of $44.9 million in annual levy revenues. And also part of our deep dive, can I have the next slide? Oh, there, I'm sorry. Didn't even see that. This is in chart form, basically what we're talking about. Supports 40, the 40.2 million for assessment counseling, case management and pharmacologic services. Provide $2.2 million for housing crisis management, suicide prevention and employment and vocational services. And $2.3 million increase to providers to address the rising cost experience over the past 15 years. Now, remember, at the beginning, we said there has not been an increase in this levy since 2008. So we're looking at 14 years of flat levy funding. Stabilize operations and manage multiple challenges expected during the levy cycle. But in addition to that, the deep dive showed certain things that we think maybe ought to be done. First of all, the MHRSB needs a contract with the county. They haven't had a contract for a while, so that probably needs to get done. Number two, trying to increase countywide partnerships for mental health services. Three, the last strategic plan was in 2017. It needs to be updated so that we can address some of the issues that have already been raised here. And one thing that may actually help save money is many of the vendors that they have have been renewed annually. If it's the same vendor that you've used for the last five years or seven years or 10 years, why not a multi-year contract so you only have to negotiate it every two or three years? That would reduce some costs. And then finally, there's a need for workforce increase. You're seeing that everywhere across the healthcare system right now. And I, I know this is a little hard to read because it's, it's small. But basically, what we're looking at, the carryover on the top line stays flat at about almost $8 million, 7.79. Revenues would increase to $45 million. Expenditures then would be at about $47 million. And then our ending carryover would actually be down a little bit to about $5 million. And then our ending carryover would actually be down a little bit, to about five-point-eight million. And at the end of the day, that's what it does. Now, there is a list of all the services, I think we did this back here, to go back to let you know all the people that are, all the services that are involved in this, right here. These are all the agencies that are contracted through the MHRSB. You can see that it's a huge number of vendors that impact a large number of people. Yes, I guess it's a large number of people. And that is what we're asking for.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm really thinking about what Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor. Vice President, I'm sorry. But what you mentioned earlier about looking at the levy itself, and you were saying an increase. But as you talk about housing, you talk about suicide, you talk about crisis, and wondering about coordinating some of those services with other entities. So, the Mental Health Board or whatever is not necessarily dealing with those issues. We put so much money into, into housing. I think about just affordable housing was forty million. But just wondering if we took some responsibilities, this, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, took some of the responsibilities off of you guys and diversified what other entities can also provide those services, then we wouldn't necessarily have to think of an increase. Of course, you talk about workforce income increase. Well, everyone is increasing workforce. But would there be a need for an increase? This is not my final decision, but I'm just saying out loud. If we took some things away and had other entities to deal with some of the things that you guys are doing?
And maybe this is the strategic planning idea, is to sit down various agencies, however you want to design it. I'm not going to design that. But a strategic plan first to say, here's what we need to do. Yeah, that we agree with that. We agree with that thinking.
I'm glad you agree with it, yeah. So, it's just a way of looking at it, because, you know, we're, as was said earlier by both my colleagues, with the cost of so many things going up and what everybody has been through when we talk about increase. Is there a way that we can look at diversifying some services and not talk about an increase? And I know you guys have spent lots of time looking at this and how we can do it without. And so, we'll be looking at it, too, to see what we can do. And I'll just be honest, how can we do it without an increase? You haven't had an increase since two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight.
I'd say, just as background information for the commissioners, as you begin your review now, a key point is the mental health levy without an increase is about thirty-six million dollars a year, and their continuing operations is forty million dollars a year, just to continue. I think it's forty, forty-point-two million to continue the current service levels without adding additional recovery housing or any of the crisis prevention, employment, provider contracts, any of the other items that are built within that increase, just as a starting point.
To continue would be forty-point-two.
To continue right now is forty million dollars.
And that would, that would take, that would take the carryover to zero, which we really shouldn't be doing.
Right, of course, yeah.
But when you talk about continuing, that means continuing what you're doing.
Continuing current service levels.
Exactly.
They need four million dollars a year of more funding than they would get with, with a straight renewal levy, yes.
So, my point is that maybe they're not doing as many, providing so many services, maybe someone else does it. That's, I'm just throwing it out. Okay. Vice President Reese. I started to call you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, so I just want to piggyback on that. I think we all know mental health is so important. And one of the things I am going to ask the administrator, that would be helpful to me, and I think hopefully for the board, at least I know for myself, is that we have a lot of pots of money that we didn't do before. So, most of the strain and the responsibility of mental health or indigent care, it was on the levy. It was the levy or very little. We would have to get federal dollars and hope that we can get some state dollars, and that didn't occur. We now have some other pots of money. We have money coming down, this foundation we done put together for addiction, and it's for all ages. We have ARPA money that will allow us to, we were very smart with the ARPA money, I think. We said we're going to put it into some long-term strategies, which gives us, I believe, four to five years to spend it. So, the question is, how do we, are we doing all that because we're trying to take the burden of all the responsibilities on the shoulders of the taxpayers? And I'm not here to make my decision today, I wanted to give you some thinking that I'm hearing. When I go to a relief-a-thon, and I created that word, and the place is down the street around the building out in Woodline, they went from Woodline Boulevard all the way down to Springfield Pike, down by the ice cream shop, and they weren't buying ice cream. Because they are in need, people who had never been in need, never had to ask help, they are still struggling with the inflation, on top of the fact they're trying to get their head above water for the pandemic. So, our goal was to use these other dollars to plug in, if you will, to help with that need, to take the burden off of the taxpayer, because we were once in a lifetime getting some money from the federal government to bail out the people. We took those dollars, and we took it very serious. We put money in mental health housing. We've got money in other mental health employment. We got a whole workforce initiative. That we're putting money into the jobs that you're talking about. We got to find the people ready to get the jobs, but we put the money there. We were very strategic in what we came up with. And I was hopeful that because we have this, we're not where the commission was before. I wasn't here, they had these tough times, they had to cut, cut, cut. Now, we're bringing in money, and people are looking, if I'm looking at TV, say, man, they getting all this money, and why am I now having to pay more at the gas pump and everywhere else, and now at my property? We even have a program helping people because they behind on their property taxes. So, we're helping them do that. With that being said, I was reading then, what does the mental health levy and its, what it can do, and what's its limitations? And I'm a little concerned on here, it says that the, the mental health levy will help provide a wide range of services to adults and children who are mentally disabled and or addicted to alcohol and drugs. I don't know if autistic, if you're not addicted to drugs, if that applies. You talked about several things. It says addiction treatment, but then it goes back.
We're all with Mental Health and Recovery Services.
Oh, that's what it do.
Not specific to the levy itself, yeah.
So, this levy, though, does not deal with treatment. So, even if you give me a house, and I can't get treated.
Mental health, treatment.
Right, mental health, yes, I'm talking about mental health.
Mental health treatment, yes, substance abuse treatment, no.
Right, well, mental health, I'm talking about mental health. I'm not talking, you put in here alcohol and drugs. I didn't, I wasn't dealing with alcohol. I'm dealing with mentally disabled people. And what I'm saying is that net is getting wider. So, if we're limited with this levy, you can't get somebody that, you can't help them because you have some limitations to the, we tried to say, can you move it over here? You say, oh, no, we limited, we limited. And the mental health ain't limited no more. It's not people born with just disabilities. It's not people just on alcohol or drugs. It's people that stand around saying, man, I'm at the edge because I can't pay these bills. And if they keep going this, this, I'm getting ready to lose everything. And we're seeing not just teenagers, we're seeing middle-class, executive-level folks who lose their job and just, we're seeing people that was, a young lady wasn't here, but this woman was, I think she was Miss America, Miss USA or something, and had the whole world in her hands and couldn't deal with the bipolar, and killed herself. So, I want to make sure that our mental health is casting a wide net. You don't have to be rich to get mental health if you're not, if you're not on drugs or if you wasn't born with a disabled or clinically disabled diagnosis.
This is not just, this is not.
This will help them?
This is not addiction, per se. This is mental health.
Okay.
And early in the, in the presentation, and one of the things that we're aware of is that we've gone from one in ten people needing mental health services to four in ten people. So, that goes along with exactly what you've said. There's been a significant increase for treatment. And it cuts across all economic levels.
Right.
We are providing that, the county, we are providing that to as many people as we can. The problem is the need isn't growing, and you've pointed that out quite nicely. The need is growing. And if you take a look at the agencies that we are dealing with, they're predominantly for mental health. They are predominantly for depression and suicide. I didn't mean to do that. Suicide prevention and things like that.
Right.
So, the answer is, yeah, that's, that's all part of it. Couldn't agree more.
Got you. Well, my thing is if I were to even consider, and it's, it'd be a lot for me to consider because I'm trying to keep costs down on the people, right? I just think that's another way to drive somebody to mental health. We getting ready to go up. Because economics is a big issue for mental health right now. Leads to a lot of issues. But in here, you have, I would like to, if we were to do that or consider it, I'd need to see more, not just giving these same agencies more. I think some of the needs are might have changed. I don't know all these agencies and all that they do, I don't know them that well. You know, Health of America, I don't know them. But you have on here a lot, you got direct purchases on here. You've got a whole lot with the courts. And I know we've been talking a lot about the Sheriff's Department, but there's a lot of other court costs, and the sheriffs are in here as well. So, my point is, if they, to me, for us, for me, to even consider an increase, and I ain't really there, I'll tell you that, I'm not the person that want to increase all the time. But I would need to see what expansiveness, and then what I would ask the administrator, I think, will help us, at least help me. I need to know all this stuff we voted on. We voted on mental health housing, we voted on anti-teen suicide, we voted on a lot of these components. What in those things that will be available for five years can take off the pressure point of this? Because at the end of the day, it's not about where you funded it from. People just want the service. They, you know, we're the ones on the inside to say, oh, this is a restricted fund, non-restricted fund. This was in a levy, this was federal money, this came. They don't understand all that. All they want to know is, how can I get some help? So, wherever we fund it from, if it's the levy, if it's ARPA, if it's the federal money, I just want to know, here's our mental health plan, and be able to work together cohesively to market and get that out. And I want to look, the first place I'm looking at, what can we do creatively? What can come off the levy, maybe for these five years, might come back on another. But five years from now, that's a whole nother world. This is this world right now. How do we use ARPA, just like you do, Mr. Administrator? You're plugging our budgets in, we're able to do more, we can expand more. We're taking pressure off of here and putting it over here on the federal government. I always like to see them pay for it first, since they gave us the money. But I'd like to just kind of see that and not stop services, but to see maybe it might come from a different, a different pot.
Yeah, and HM, the, our consultant did a nice job of describing the various agencies. So, they'll give you the definitions that you need to have.
Absolutely. And I'm sure they do great work, I'm not, because they've been around for this many years. They've been holding it down for this many years, they have expertise in these areas. We just want to, I know our board had talked about, opening up, there's always something, you know, new. We went from, you know, we went from the flip phone, and now we got the smartphone, but we still got a phone. Now, I hear it's not a smartphone, it's a smart device. So, we're always constantly improving and, and adding. But I just think for, for us, you guys have done a fantastic job of getting us here. This is not easy, and I thank you guys, you're volunteering to do this. I think at this point, though, the administration, because you don't know everything that we have, that we've ARPA, the whole budget, but the administration does, it can kind of help give us a table, like you've done before in other cases, so that we can see the whole picture of what we're doing. Because we don't want to cut anything, but we want to, you know, see if we can be creative with the funds that we already have.
Madam President, just briefly, so we'd be happy to do that, and that would be the natural course of things at this point in time, that we would take a look at how different funding sources might come into play as it relates to any of the levies that would be up. And I would just give Lisa some kudos here, that on an annual basis, we do a lot of that anyway in terms of looking at how different funding sources can offset levies, even, even the general fund. As it is right now, we're subsidizing, I think it's the indigent care levy, or we have subsidized in the, over the past several years, the indigent care levy to the tune of a couple million dollars a year. And so, we're constantly looking, how do we make the, the best use of all the funding pots that we have? So, as you go forward in late July, early August, with sort of finding something to the ballot, we'll make sure that we get you something that, that shows to the degree that it's possible where any synergies might be that you could, you could offset on any of these, on any of these programs, so.
Yeah, and it's not just, like you said, not just the mental health, but whatever we're doing of, you know, going up as the last option if we can, but knowing that we do have strains and stresses that we've got to provide these services. And it just helps the public because they just see the news, say, hey, you got all this money, now why you need my money? So, I think that would definitely help us, at least looking forward to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Thank you. I, too, will look forward to the report to try to better understand how the ARPA dollars impact this, and knowing that they're limited, you know, one-time-only dollars, and what that impact could be on the mental health levy. And to that point, I have a couple much more direct questions, because so much of what I was going to ask has already been covered. So, during the conversations at the levy review level, if we were to not have an increase in this levy, did you get an understanding of what would happen then to the services? Because I know the, the reserve has been reduced over the years. And so, what would be the impact of an increase to this levy? In other words, what would be cut? Or do you have any sense of that?
We actually had talked about this a little bit. What would probably happen is that the large agencies that have big budgets would probably be cut less than the small agencies that really depend upon this to do their services. In other words, we would make cuts probably in a, or you would make cuts, not me. It's nothing to do with me.
Not your role.
You would, you would probably have to pick and choose where to make the cuts and take a look at what the services are. Kind of what has been talked about is to say, all right, well, there's an overlap here. We've talked about the two-point-five-eight million dollars, and where would that go? Well, that's fine, but then there are other agencies, and some of the smaller agencies depend upon, that are providing services, depend upon levy monies for most of their income as opposed to some of the, the large agencies. So, you'd have to pick and choose.
Okay. And therein is, becomes this question about overlap, and is there any capacity to fund it somewhere else?
To, just to maintain services, as I said before, of about four million dollars a year. So, you'd be looking, the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board would be looking at coming up with a budget with a four-million-dollar minimum annual reduction.
Is that four million static throughout the five years, or would it increase?
That's to keep current services, so anything you're doing to increase, be it salary increases, personnel changes, anything would have to maintain that, that baseline without doing additional cuts throughout, but yeah.
One of the things that you might think about, and you've all done a lot of budgeting, would be, well, we're going to hire fewer people. Well, if you hire a few people, that means you have fewer services.
It's people not receiving services.
You know, keep in mind, most of these are not bricks and mortar. Most of these are hiring professionals to do their job. And so, if you cut it, then you're going to have fewer professionals. And we've already talked about the fact that, especially in my field, docs are leaving at a fairly brisk pace right now. And that's, that's going to become, in my opinion, a real issue. So, that's off, really, part of the topic, but it's not central topic. So, when you think about it, is that when you're looking at your budget, you're going to say, well, where can I take it from? Well, it's, it's personnel costs. It's not brick and mortar costs, it's personnel costs.
Okay. Yeah, another question, so you arrived at a dollar amount or a level at which you thought there should be an increase. Can you help me better understand if you looked at varying levels and how you landed, where you landed? And what this actually made, and so I've got a chart also, the property tax impact. And so, want to talk about, talk about it in terms of the impact to the property, yeah, there it is. Yeah, the impact to the property taxpayer, the homeowner, and what that means. So, can you walk us through that?
Yeah, sure. So, this is the, this is my end. Twenty-twenty-two tax levy, based on the TLRC's recommendations, the amounts for each levy, annual revenues that they would receive at that amount, which is an average over the five-year period, the millage rates for those, and the impact on the hundred-thousand-dollar home. So, what you see is unchanged in indigent care and senior services from the current year. But in the case of the increase for the mental health levy, the cost per hundred-thousand-dollar home would go up from forty dollars and ninety-three cents to fifty-four dollars. dollar home would go up from forty dollars and ninety-three cents to fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. I believe it's a thirteen dollar and thirty cent increase at that rate.
Okay.
It's roughly a thirty percent increase.
Yeah.
So how did you arrive at that level? Ed, how did you?
We, we, no, we came up with a gross number.
Oh, I see.
And then, and then we have to get a consult from the.
No, how, not how we got that number, she's talking about the total, the revenue amount, the forty-four.
Well, how, how did you arrive at the increase? Because you could have done an increase at a variety of levels. I'm just wondering why this level.
This is what, this is what was, this is what was recommended by the Mental Health, MHRSB, for what they need to make their, to go forward. And this came through discussions with the consultants, and then through our open meetings, through our, our meetings with them. And they say, these are the, this is what we're going to need for these programs to make them work. So discussions between the MHRSB, the consultants, and then presented to us.
We've done our calculations as well. As you know, the, the Tax Levy Committee has a policy with an inflation rate that's been in existence since 2009 with specific calculations. We looked at that as well five years ago for the Senior Services Levy. We did a five-year calculation and a 10-year calculation, and then I think what was actually approved was a little bit higher than that amount, because it's been such a long time since increases had been received. We've done those calculations as well. The five-year Tax Levy Committee policy increase is about forty point two million dollars, which.
They're already spending.
Happens to tie, just randomly, ties right back to their amount that they, that they need annually right now as an increase. We also did a 10-year inflation rate calculation, and I believe that got at around forty-two million dollars a year. And then the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board request, which was the TLRC's recommendation of the forty-four point nine million dollars to be able to add services.
All right, so I'm, forgive me, I'm.
Nope.
Still not entirely clear. Let me be more direct in my question.
Yes.
All right, so the increase is, is a result of conversations with the consultant, with the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, with the, the public hearings. Okay, understand that. So Lisa, when you say, we need four million dollars increase per year, just to standard, you know, keep static what we've got, how much is this increase that's being recommended generating in addition each year? So is it four million? Is it over?
Four point seven million dollars.
So four point seven million over the five years.
So a flat levy would generate thirty-two million dollars a year. The TLRC five-year inflation rate would generate forty point two million dollars a year. The request is forty-four point nine million dollars for the recommendation.
So my interpretation of that, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you will, so, so this recommendation is to maintain what we've got. And add a little bit more.
Correct.
Add four million dollars more, yes.
Okay. And talk to me a little, about that a little bit more. Where is that showing up here?
That's, that's, so the, the orange there is keeping things flat.
Okay.
Um, it's an increase to the levy, but it's flat in terms of the amount of expenses, that, to continue where they're currently at with expenses.
Which fits within the inflation.
Okay.
There's an inflation modifier that the county allows us when we do these things. So this would be normal if you wish.
Okay.
That'd be the TLRC five-year inflation. The second in blue adds, these are where you break out to get to the forty-four point nine. It provides an additional two point two million in these critical areas, housing, crisis, suicide prevention. And then the two point three allows for increases to provider contracts to give them some additional funding.
Okay. Thank you. That's much more clear. Yeah, I really appreciate it. Yep.
Thanks. I just want to make it clear that I'm not interested at all cutting anything. I'm going to try to figure out how I can and our colleagues can be more creative as we look at divvying things out. And also, I want to say, since there has not been an increase since 2008, just applaud the board and all the people that have been working so hard to make that happen, that's not a little thing. So I just want to say that I certainly appreciate that it hasn't gone up since then. So I wanted to make that statement. Okay. Thank you so much.
That's a shout out to Pat Trivian.
Yeah, I was looking at it.
That's really good.
Yeah.
And, and in answer to the unsaid question, we enjoy what we're doing on the TLRC. We think it's really important work that we represent the citizens of this, of the county and not anybody else.
Oh, absolutely.
So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for your hard work. Yeah.
Thank you. One more levy.
Okay, yeah.
Senior Services Levy. Oh, I lost my presentation. The Senior Services Levy was approved with an increase in 2017. The majority of services are provided by Southwest Ohio Council on Aging. It also includes adult protective services provided by JFS, and some senior supports through the Veteran Services Commission for veterans or widows or widowers of veterans needing financial assistance. The three new programs that were, well, four now, were the Homeless Respite, Patient Navigation, Care for Caregivers, and the Utility Assistance Program this past year. So I have a couple notes on the Senior Services Levy. If this will work, I'll go through it. Doesn't like me now. Oh. Okay. Well, the Senior Services Levy has two large programs within it through Council on Aging. It's the Elderly Services Program, which provides aid to decrease individuals going to nursing homes, anything they can to keep them in their homes. A full range of community services, as well as home repair assistance and modifications to keep seniors in their homes. As well as new in the, it was started as a pilot during the last levy cycle, but fully ramped up in this current levy cycle, is the Fast Track Home Program, which is similar to the Elderly Services Program, but it is providing short-term acute needs for individuals as they are leaving the hospital or other nursing care facilities to allow them to transition back to normal life. Individuals that just need help after a hip replacement or knee surgery, and they can't get around, and they need someone to come into their home for maybe forty-five days, and then they can enroll off the program. They're seeing huge supports and that, and huge successes. They've expanded it to a number of hospitals within the county, and they're identifying clients while they are still in the hospital, enrolling them into the program, and then being able to provide that care immediately for them. It ends up being significantly lower cost, because otherwise individuals aren't enrolling the program until they get home, and then they have an issue. Usually the issue's a larger concern, and they need care for a longer period of time. This is information on the Fast Track model. Some examples of some issues that Council on Aging faced over the pandemic. Adult Day, as you, Adult Day Centers for Seniors obviously were shut down during the pandemic. So huge drops in, in access to those during that period of time. They're also struggling as those centers are beginning to open back up, because the employee, individuals that were employed by those centers have, now have other careers and other positions. They're having trouble getting employees in to be able to open those centers up. So seniors are continuing to suffer, but not have access to those centers, which is causing disruption for seniors, as well as their caregivers in their homes. Home-delivered meals, you can see the ramp up over the course of the pandemic in home-delivered meals. Council on Aging received CARES funding for home-delivered meals, and really ramped up that program to be able to access seniors that otherwise would have been an Adult Day or other access locations. They're starting to see that stabilize now, but there was just a huge demand. They're looking, it was one point six million dollars in additional spending just for the meals programs. Another example was transportation. As you can see, that is still declining from pre, pre-pandemic levels, but starting to increase back up. The current disruptor, the current issues that we are having involves inflation, as it affects everyone across the board, but these numbers are just staggering. For home-delivered meals, you would normally see an increase of two or three percent, might be a little shocking. They're seeing increases of thirty-five percent in the cost of food for home-delivered meals. Everything from a slice of turkey is up sixty-four percent. You know, where's the fruit? A cup of diced pears has gone up forty-four percent. The fuel, the wages, the food trays, everything necessary. So continuing to fund those is a huge cost. Back to staffing and issues finding staff, you can see the numbers trending there for home care staffing. The client utilization dropped fifty-six percent during 2019, which is, was even before the pandemic hit, and we are still, Council on Aging has still not been able to ramp up the home care. I'll talk about some technology that they're utilizing to try to combat that. But you can see the numbers down here. Twenty-five percent of individuals in home care are going without assistance because of staffing shortages. As a response to that, COA is, has a pilot initiative to increase the hourly rate for home care by two dollars an hour. They did that in Warren County. What they found was utilization rates did not increase even with that, unfortunately. We're looking at expanding referrals and how they reach people, expanding consumer-directed care, experimenting with different delivery models. They've got a laundry delivery services that they've started now, instead of a home care aide coming in to do your laundry. So a service can come and pick it up and do a larger quantity of laundry at the same time and return it back to the home. They're finding success with that program now, and as a result, their care is starting to grow. But they're being very innovative about how they look at it, because it's not, staffing is not going to solve the problem. The other newest thing that they've start, they are starting, I believe launching right now, is the Add an Aid Program. It gets back to your smart technology, smart device. You can actually, seniors will be able to log into an app and match up with someone in their community that provide, can provide care for them. Maybe someone down the street or in their neighborhood is providing care to their family member, and could easily come over and spend a couple hours taking care of another senior and get directly paid for that service. So they're looking into that right now. I believe that's launching as we speak. Some additional programs within the levy that we just talked about, the four new programs here, I don't know why they get smaller, but Care for Caregivers was initially home care services, because these, the initial three programs here were initially out of the Indigent Care Levy process recommendations. They were moved to the Senior Services Levy, and we had some transitions and modifiers when that happened. It was initially, initially an in-home care service. The program was redesigned as Care for Caregivers, and was contracted in early 2021. The initial core heart was launched in spring of this year. Center for Closing the Health Gap has created a model program to serve short and long-term needs of caregivers and promote caregiver wellness. At this point, the program's just starting, but we're looking forward at the mid-cycle review to be able to get back to that program and look at the data and see what they're doing. They've worked with University of Cincinnati to create, I can, I apologize, I can't remember the name of what they're doing with it, but it's a, a model for the program so that it can be taken and implemented in other communities throughout the country. Respite Care, Center for Respite Care, Jeanette Hargreaves mentioned this program earlier when we were talking about the Indigent Care Levy. They continue to serve homeless adults needing medical care. The center utilizes, has utilized eighty percent of the annual available funding of the levy through the course of the period, due to the limitations for seniors qualifying as being over age sixty. They take adults from all over, only bill the levy for charges for seniors that happen to be receiving that care. And what they've found is more and more, the individuals that they're serving are just younger, because being homeless ages an individual faster. So a fifty-year-old is more like a sixty-five or seventy-year-old, otherwise, in terms of their health complications. Patient Navigation is provided by CareStar and focused mainly on individuals connected through St. Vincent de Paul's Charitable Pharmacy, which is a link between those two levies coming, levy programs. The program currently provides navigation services to about four hundred and fifty seniors a year. And then we have the Utility Assistance Program, which was added this past year. We, so far, since the launch in April 2022, the program has provided just over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in assistance. That's almost half of the available assistance within that program. And that is, as of yesterday's update, five hundred and twenty-one seniors have received utility assistance, and a hundred and twenty have received home repairs to date. I will turn this over to Jenny O'Donnell for the issues.
Hello, Commissioners. So I am Dr. O'Donnell. I served as the Chair of the Senior Services Levy, and I come from a place of raw experience on this levy. I, as you know, I have an elderly mother, I have family members who've used these services, and I'm very passionate about this. So if I get a little crazy, please give me a pass. So first of all, I want to thank all the providers that are in the room, and also that might be listening in, because one of the things that came out from our consultant's report, and also just from my inside sources, is that the, the providers in Hamilton County are doing an incredible job with the resources that they have. And you've heard this, you know, we've pounded this drum today, right? The, the resources are not there, although you'll see, at the end of the day, I'm not asking my, my subcommittee, the TLRC is not asking for an increase on this levy. But I do want to talk about the resources that aren't there, and how we can do something about that. COA, Council on Aging gets the bulk of this levy, sort of like in the sheriff and the other ones, and the hospitals, and, and the Indigent Care Levy. COA's sort of the big, the big one in the room. They then, if they can't spend their money, and, and in the last, in the last five years, they've had trouble because of staffing and COVID, if they can't spend their money, then money starts to build up. The others, much smaller, much smaller entities in this levy, really don't have that kind of bandwidth. They're going to spend their money, unless, of course, you're our friends at Closing the Healthcare Gap, who didn't get started until very late in the levy. So I want you to kind of keep that frame as, as I talk about what, what we, what we examined, and what the, what the consultants mentioned to us. Because COA had the staffing problems, and the, you know, you saw the, the roller coaster ride. Actually, could you go back to that slide? I think that's a really good. Yeah, for staffing. So you see the roller coaster li, ride that the consumer, this is, that, that the COA was, was on with getting, getting their services used, that's really a function of staffing. Now, COVID did have a, sure, COVID, you know, we all know, COVID blew us all out of the water. But at the end of the day, it's really staffing. So COA, we were very pleased to find out, is looked at as a leader in the country in their innovation and their creativity on how to address this problem. Lisa mentioned, they already ran something called a pilot project. That means you just run a little tiny test somewhere to see if you can have an impact. They already ran a pilot project in Warren County, one of the, you know, nearby counties, to see if raising, just, just raising the hourly rate for a direct care provider, that's somebody who literally is hands-on with our seniors, right? If just raising their hourly rate by two dollars an hour could have any impact. Because I think all of us kind of assume, like intuitively, oh, well, that would help fix the problem. In fact, and, and I work in Warren County quite a bit, so I checked into this once, COA told me about it. In fact, it didn't change anything, because the problem for our, our staff members, for, for the direct care workers that work for me, in fact, is not just money. It's about schedule flexibility, childcare, transportation services, all these things. So COA smartly tried this test, saw no impact, and said, oh, God, we have, got to do something different, right? And that's when they came up with this sort of dating app, if you will, that Lisa talked about earlier, where they're trying to match people who are not traditionally going to say, listen, I'm looking for a job, a job, like a nine-to-five kind of thing. I'm just looking to help a few seniors, and I have a few hours to give, and if I could be paid for that service, I would be happy to do it. But it has to be convenient. I have to have transportation, or it has to be easy for me to get to, right? And I use the example of my mom. If there's somebody down the street, you know, who's, who's staying at home, or mostly at home, and is willing to go check on my mom for a few hours, they're very likely to do that, and you can, you can be sure, I've tried that, right? But they're not willing to drive halfway across town, to, to serve somebody halfway across town for two hours over there, and then drive north for two, you know, for forty minutes and serve somebody for two hours there. I know, that's too complicated, right? That's not what they want to do. So this app that COA has come up with is an innovative way to try to increase the pool of available workforce. I think it's, it's edgy, right? It's clever and it's edgy and it might work and it even has some potential, if it works, to be bigger than solving just Hamilton County's problem. And people around the country are actually watching. So that's one of the things I want you to hear today is that this is the kind of provider agency that we have in Hamilton County. And we have it not just in our Senior Services Levy, but we have it in our Mental Health Services Levy in GCBH and Toward House. We have it in our Indigent Care Levy, in Center for some some of the the agencies that we saw in there. They are trying to figure out how to stretch these dollars as much as possible. Now, that said, in the last five-year levy on the Senior Services, we didn't spend all the money. We got an increase in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and seventeen. We being the residents of Hamilton County for Senior Services, right? We got an increase in two thousand and seventeen. We added three new programs to see how they would fly. The other thing I think Mr. Aludo would let us know is that we actually got more than we had originally projected when we did the increase, and I don't understand how this works at all, but we did an increase and then more came in than we had thought was going to come in from that increase. So somebody else can explain that.
The auditor's projection, revenues came in higher. There's that's statistically normal for all levies and all levies benefited.
So that shows up, thank you, that shows up in the in the overage. The other thing, like I said, COA, the big behemoth in the in the levy, did not spend all their funds. That doesn't mean they didn't need the funds. And if they had been able to get the workforce and we had not had COVID, they would have spent those funds. And I really believe that they would have. And I very much believe they're going to spend them going forward. In fact, to a deficit, not in the next five years, but in the next ten for sure. So I'm giving you fair warning on what I'll say next time, right? The other thing that happened is a couple of the smaller programs, and I say smaller because they're funded only at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. Couple of those programs, one of them is is the one, the really creative one for caring for caregivers. We know the research is very clear that caregivers just, as I stand here today, get shredded. You know, they're working full-time jobs, they're managing their own households and families, and yet they're caring for their elderly parents and trying to keep them in their home. So this Caring for Caregivers program that's run by Closing for the Health Healthcare, Closing the Healthcare Gap, did not get launched until just recently. So and I mean, literally like last week. So their two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year has been stockpiled sitting there. The 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 next piece is a little, I'm a li- it's I'm very sensitive about talking about this one because it's sort of it's it my recommendation, our recommendation is that we make a change that I think is going to hurt a vendor, a vendor who did an incredible job. CareStar won the RFP for Providing Patient Navigator Services for Hamilton County. That was part of the new levy dollars in twenty seventeen. They did a great job. They became the primary prefer or the pri- primary referral source for St. Vincent de Paul Charitable Pharmacy. So I'll just put it in reality for you. Somebody walks into St. Vincent de Paul, they they are a senior. That's because that's what we're talking about. They're a senior, they walk in, they say, I can't afford my medications. And the folks at St. Vincent de Paul say, we can help you get your medications, but we also want to make sure you're connected to all the other services. Now, for whatever reason, that senior didn't call COA, they didn't call the state help line. There's a there's a big fat one-eight-hundred state help line in Ohio. They didn't call that. So St. Vincent de Paul will call CareStar and connect those four hundred and fifty per year seniors basically to COA services. That's that's really how that worked. So that's what that Patient Navigator Project was. However, our consultants recognized that, in fact, this is a duplicative service. COA in Hamilton County offers something called Front Door, which serves about forty thousand clients per year in Hamilton County doing the exact same thing that the RFP for CareStar does. So in the in the interest of recognizing the county taxpayers should be the payer of last resort, my committee is recommending that we don't fund this duplicative service. Front Door, the COA program that is exactly the same as the CareStar program, is funded through another mechanism that that COA said they have down. It's not a problem. They don't need taxpayer dollars for that service. So one of our recommendations is to take out that duplicative service. That would then put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year back into the levy fund. The other bright spot is, I'm sure it was you all who came up with this, but the utility support program that just got launched that Lisa mentioned is going gangbusters and people are using it. So that has been a great way to use some of the surplus that these other programs, for the reasons that I discussed, have not used. I think that's a really good example of how if there's a little squishy room inside that levy, you can do this either on a short or long-term basis, depending on the need. Is if as you measure the need, you can redirect those dollars within that levy. And that's what that utility program has done. At the end of the day, our recommendation is no increase.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I just have a couple questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Great work, your committee, especially when we hear that you're able to do what you need to do without an increase because I see we have some overage here, so that that's a good thing. We know caregiving is really hard. I also want to say that Council on Aging is just awesome every time. I've personally or people I know have used them. I'd like to say, one, two, three, four, five, we we have five entities that have received money from the levy. I don't know how long they've been receiving it, but we've always talked about, the board has talked about reaching out to other entities that can maybe possibly provide senior services because there are some that are not funded. We have done that a little bit, but when you look at Council on Aging, twenty-six million, that's that's quite a bit. And so my question is, not to you guys necessarily, but as a board, how do we reach out to maybe smaller entities to to maybe get some of these monies that are available through the levy? That's what I'm wondering about. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, no, that's absolutely. I can respond to that. That is similar to the three programs that were added this year. And that's done through an RFP process for programs. Council on Aging is Hamilton County's area agency for aging services through the state of Ohio. So they have a direct contract for the bulk of our aging services, which is largely that elderly services program and branching from that, the Fast Track program. But newer services that have come up through the pro- through through the TLRC process and through the board, if there is a program area, we can develop an RFP with, as long as there's funding and put out an RFP and submit bids and contract with agencies in the same way that we did for those three services. All three of those were done through a full RFP process.
Yeah, and those three services are great. They're working well.
And similarly, just as a side in Indigent Care and services outside of the hospitals are done through that same process.
Okay, great. So as we look at no increase, we're still looking at the twenty-six million for Council on Aging currently.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so maybe we can look at some others, too. One other thing I had. Oh, yeah, the levy administration.
Mm-hmm.
Is that all salaries or what?
That includes an automatic fee of all levies of auditor and treasurer fees associated with the levy, as well as a tiny portion of my salary spread throughout the levies. In the initial year, it includes the board of elections costs for any levy on the ballot. And in the final year, it includes the consultant costs for the levy reviews.
Okay, okay.
But otherwise, that roughly four hundred thousand dollars is almost entirely the auditor and treasurer fees for that levy. It's a portion of the revenues that the levy brings in that's charged through, I think, the state ORC.
Okay.
Yes, it's throughout. Yeah, it's the same rate.
And it would be interesting for me to see the numbers that they've impacted, each one of them. Like a Council on Aging, how many people have they actually directly impacted?
Just just direct client served.
Yeah, that would be great for me. Okay, Vice President Reese.
Thank you very much, Dr. Jenny. I appreciate you being here and breaking it all down for us. I want to also commend Council on Aging. Do a great job. I wanted to highlight two additional programs as it relates to technology. And you kind of went through that, and I just think it's an important component. I was at the Relief-a-Thon that we had and Council on Aging was there. It was very helpful because when we when we did the first Relief-a-Thon, obviously it was virtual. Then we put the bus out and a lot of seniors were being turned away because it didn't qualify for that pot of money and they had stood in line. They kind of felt so bad. But this time, I thought our staff did a better job in terms of walking the line. If there were seniors, getting them out of the line, bringing them in so they could go to their table as others were going to a different area of money. So they were able to go directly to Council on Aging. And Mayor Brian Poole of the Village of Woodline was very impressed with that. He was, he actually went out and started helping. I tried to help as much as I could with what they kept telling me, go sit down somewhere with my crutch. But it was, we had a a senior who did not necessarily know what bus to catch. She said, you know, gas costs her eighty dollars to fill up her gas tank. So she decided to take a bus, but she didn't know the right one to get on. And she took three buses to get there and had the best attitude, not upset, not, and was so thankful. She said it was so much better for her to be able to, you know, she'd have to stand in line. She went right into Council on Aging. She said they helped her. She was able to talk to a person. And, you know, when Council on Aging talks to you, you feel like you really have someone you can count on. And she came out so happy and so thankful and talked about how this is really going to help her keep her lights on. And she said she's never had to ask for this type of help before. So my point is, when I when they were there, I got a chance to see the Living Well app. And I think it is, I do think it's groundbreaking. I do think it's a leader, you know, I'm always looking for us to be number one. I know, Dr. Jenny, you mentioned Warren County. I got to get you back at Hamilton County. We we got it going on. But no, on on a much serious note, they were teaching the seniors different things. But this is groundbreaking because I think, where's Frank at from our HR department? He needs to be in here. This might not just be Council on Aging, this could be a test model, but the new employment model is people want to control their time. They don't want to be locked down to certain times. And one of the things that we're doing that's innovative, that our board, we put forward in this budget for HR, we talked about to the administrator, I know I've talked to him several times about it, how to get retirees who want to make, need to make a little more money, you know, inflation, those kind of things, but not necessarily come all the way back in to the office here. And maybe this, I would ask the administrator to look into this with Frank, our HR expert. With Council on Agency, can this be a model that we can test out for maybe retirees who are seniors, who want to, who have expertise, who want to help us? We need the help. We need more people to come in. We don't have a whole lot of time to train. And maybe this is a app that could be even more expansive, that we can have a prototype. Because what this is, but with a lot more background checks, of course. This is the Uber, the DoorDash model. People want to turn it on when I need some money and turn it off, I'm going on vacation. I don't need no money today. I'm broke today. Let me see if I can go on this app and and help out and work. But I don't want to be committed to the paperwork and working forever and ever. I want to control my schedule. So I I wanted to just highlight that to our administrator because we're getting ready to roll out a program where we said, hey, seniors, you've got the knowledge. You've been here. Bring you back in and that knowledge base. So maybe we could do it through the app. And I can see that app working for for that and for this workforce model that we just put a bunch of money in. How do we get more nurses? Nurses are, they're flying to other places to work and it's their choice. I want to make some extra money. I'm going to another state and I'm going to do a few hours and I'm back here. And we had that even with Hamilton County Department of Health. The governor, they brought in some nurses from Detroit and other places. So let's get this app and partner with Council on Aging, help them expand the app, look into the app, put our people on it and see if this could be a model. We may be discovering the new way to hire people to help us in a lot of different areas. So I just wanted to commend that. The VR caregiver education, I got to put on the goggles. It was just amazing. I loved it. And I think it's great to help with caregiver education. This is the technology that we're talking about. This is the need that we that we have for seniors to learn how to do these things and they can walk through caregiving and and see the people acting the different roles in caregiving. This is awesome. And I also saw another city or state, they did it with music. So we were thinking maybe with the Black Music Walk of Fame, we can add that in. And they've got the music and everything. This is just incredible. So I do want to commend you. I also want to commend partnerships. I just want to put that in the, we want partnerships. And I think this might be a way President Dumas mentioned about getting newer organizations involved. SOACT, for the first time, is involved. Sandra Mitchell, through a partnership with Council on Aging. And we encourage those partnerships. Why is that important? Closing the Health Gap was an excellent organization. I wasn't here when you originally passed the RFP and all of that, but it's very difficult. The RFP process, I got here, was four hundred-some pages for just up to two hundred and fifty thousand. I was disappointed that when I got here, it had already been passed like three years and we were just voting on the funding. We see other things that come, there's millions of dollars and it's five pages front and back. But something like this, it was so thick, so overwhelming. And then COVID hit and then we jump up and say, well, you know, they didn't spend the money. Well, I mean, we just, we're, like you said, we're just getting started. So I would encourage partnerships versus just RFPs by themselves because it is very difficult for a new agency to do business with us. It's it's just very difficult. And I know Mike will make sure every page and everything, but if if we have the wonderful organization as the umbrella and we've got some partnerships under them, I think we can get some of these programs moving a little bit quicker. So that's the things that I have. Obviously, the utility program, I can't go anywhere without a senior saying this is awesome. This is amazing. I would like to see that to be continued in a more permanent way because there are a variety of things that it helps and maybe they can discover what those flexibilities are. And then also making sure that we market these things. So again, I just kudos and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Can I real quickly, just in the nature of partnerships? I just wanted to add in partnership, COA is actually one of the presenters with the Closing the Health Gap Care for Caregivers program as well. And they've brought out the VR and kind of started all that, which is incredible. And they've also reached out to me really just last week and said, hey, moving forward, as we look at all of these programs, we're happy to help you out with contracting.
I think there's one other little piece on the partnership, too. When we talked to COA about the duplic- duplicative service that CareStar was providing, they said, you know, we can talk to CareStar about being a vendor for us there, too. So that, to your point, would bring them in, keep them going, allow them to continue the great service here.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. O'Donnell, for being here and your presentation and to your subcommittee, of course. So thank you for giving such a detailed presentation, especially with these outlying areas of interest that this was our attempt at being creative with what we were hearing through the Indigent Care lens with a levy that was not going to get an increase and trying to figure out how we put that into the levy that is getting the increase and trying to figure out where that overlap is and what we can do there, what what makes sense. Because, you know, I'll speak for myself, in my time here, of the seven levies, we've only increased two. And they were seniors and children.
Right.
And so we're trying to be as conservative as we can be to the benefit of the the property tax owners or the homeowners, but also try to understand. tax owners or the homeowners, but also try to understand that there is an increased need for services in the community, and how do we, how do we manage that. So I'm especially intrigued by your analysis of these four, the Care for the Caregiver, Respite Care, Patient Navigation and Utility Assistance, which is a bit of an outlier, because I came later, per this board. So like that you took a critical look at the Patient Navigation piece, we heard that it was something that people wanted and needed. I am interested to learn that, you know, this is being duplicated through COA, was something we did not know, or maybe probably was not happening at the time. So that does, I don't mean to be cavalier, but it's 250,000, or $50,000 then becomes available if we were to decide with that recommendation to, you know, put that money somewhere else. So I do think, unlike what we just heard through Indigent Care, which is, it's tight, 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 this one, it appears we've got a little bit of flexibility. Now, it has to be towards seniors, and that's the challenge, right, to make it fit. But thank you for pointing it out, and I think, you know, the work of the subcommittee, you know, points something out like this to us so that we do have that kind of flexibility.
I just want to comment on that thing about it has to be seniors. So I got pretty, pretty wound up, I got pretty wound up about the Center for Respite Care, because their work is, is absolutely incredible. I work in the criminal justice world. I work with, with inmates, basically, and I know the physical and physiological impact of living a life where you've not had the access to medical care and, you know, the trials and tribulations, what it does to the body and the mind. And so when the Center for Respite Care said to me, "We've spent almost all of our money, and we could easily spend a lot more if we could just get that age limit lowered to 50," because the 50-year-old in that indigent population is much more physically and physiologically like the 60 and 70-year-old. So, you know, so I said, "Why can't we just change it?" Apparently, that's a federal definition, and I'd have to work a lot harder to get it changed, but I haven't stopped working, just so you know.
Right, right. So to that end, did the committee talk about a recommendation related to the 250,000, if it were not to fund the Patient Navigation?
We did not talk specifically. There are so many opportunities there. One is the, the utility program, which honestly, by the time I had written, because I wrote the opinion, by the time I had written the opinion, we didn't have yet, we didn't not yet have numbers on the utility program, but it looked like it was going to be a program, a good program. I mean, here we are, two weeks later, and we know 450,000. So that got high marks in my subcommittee to continue that program if possible. The other one would be if we could somehow target, because I'm worried about that mental health levy, if we could somehow target funding to mental health specifically for seniors. That would be another area of opportunity. I, I think there's lots of opportunity.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And as you talk about the age range, I remember listening during the hearing, the testimonies from people about not being able to be helped. It was really something. And maybe we can look into someone trying to, or some group trying to lobby to look at that age range.
It just gets to when we fit it into the Senior Services Levy, that the requirements within that is 60 and above.
So, okay, thank you so much, and you're going to close.
Yep, I'm going to close. I will just add that Gwen McFarland has been listening in this whole time, just for some brief remarks.
Sure.
She's there. Gwen?
Hello, Gwen.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes. I hear you now. Uh-huh.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to share with you guys how awesome this meeting has been. Our goal and our intent was to be able to address many of the issues that you all raised as our commissioners. And I also want to say, some of the issues, most of them, we had raised ourselves as a, as a TLRC committee in the multiple meetings that we had. And we stayed focused as much as we could on the mission, which is to create a balance between the needs for funding for the various agency levies, and at the same time, making sure that we did not put an unnecessary burden on the, on the home and the business owners in our community as well. So the struggles that we struggled with, and we're able to finally come to some kind of resolution, or just what you brought up, we brought up the question to each agency, what would be the impact on your agency if funding was not increased or there was no funding available? They all gave excellent feedback because, regarding what would, the impact of that would be. So, you know, I just want to just close, because I know this has been a lengthy meeting, but I just want to say that as good stewards, the Tax Levy Review Committee stayed focused on looking at what we could do to move the needle in a cost-effective manner, and at the same time, be able to provide feedback to you guys, indicating clearly that our goal is always to help support the agencies, but also understanding the importance of delivering services in a physical, fiscally conservative manner. That was always, continues to be the goal for all of us. And, and I just want to say this as I'm closing, because, and I want to thank you guys for taking the time to dive deeply, as we did. And sometimes during our meetings, I said, "My God, I think we feel like county commissioners," but that's how serious we have taken our task as, as, as a TLRC committee. And I want to thank especially all of the staff with the County Commissioners Office, and especially Lisa Webb. Lisa has just provided an outstanding, as she always has, resource because of the history that she has, the knowledge that she has, the wisdom that she has. She kept us focused to get to where we are today. So now, we very, very happily are able to turn the, give the baton over to you guys, because, again, we were all sitting on the same ship with the same questions. So I just want to thank you. This has been a great afternoon. I just, and I'm so sorry I could not be there, but I was be there, I was there anyway via Zoom. Thank you very much for the questions you raised, and thank you for helping us to move the needle. And then the rest now is in your good hands. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, and I want, as a board, to thank you for leading the charge of these committees to look at the levy. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
That was well said. We are passing the baton. But as we pass the baton, there are a couple of points that I want to make sure you know for the next steps as we move into July. I'll get back to the presentation. Thank you. Maybe. You just click it. I think there's only like two slides left from there. There we go. So you've, you saw the cost per $100,000 home slide. The other slide is just the next steps. So the next step from this point in the process are for the commissioners to make their determinations and approve the ballot language and ballot resolutions before the state, Secretary of State's deadline, which is 90 days prior to the election. To make that happen, there are a couple of steps along the way. The first is commissioners scheduling public hearings to hear from the citizens on the levies. The Tax Levy Committee did their public hearings in the middle of June. These will be additional hearings for now for the commissioners to hear from the community about each of the three levies. Additionally, there are two pieces of legislation that need to be approved by the commissioners for the ballot. The first piece of legislation is a request for the auditor to certify millage amounts prior to any ballot resolution coming forward. I will have those drafted and on the commissioner's agenda for the July 14th meeting. Those are required of any ballot amount being considered for levies with the ballot resolutions. So we could approve, and we have in the past, approve one, would mention, say, Senior Services, a flat renewal, and then a ballot language mimicking the same. If you're considering multiple options, I believe at some points, we've had as many as five different options on the table. We would need to approve a request for the auditor to certify millage for all of those millage options. And then when it comes to the commissioners approving a ballot resolution, you can only approve a ballot resolution for, for something in an amount of which the auditor has already certified, and you've already requested the certification from the auditor. So the certification resolution in no way holds you to that amount, but it allows you to consider it as an option for when you do approve the ballot resolution. So anything that you're considering in these levies of any suite of amounts, the sooner I get those, the better, the easier it is for me to work with the auditor to get those numbers, to create those resolutions, to make sure you have them, so that they're approved in advance of the ballot resolutions. So we can't do those on the same day. With that timing in mind, I will advance the auditor certificate requests that I know of in advance of July 14th meeting, and then the ballot resolutions can be brought forward for legislation either at the commissioners' Thursday, July 20, 28th meeting, or the Tuesday, August 9th meeting. August, Wednesday, August 10th is the deadline. They need to be approved and hand-delivered to the Board of Elections by Wednesday at 4:00 PM. Any questions on that timeline or schedule?
Thank you. Any questions on those final steps? Vice President Reese?
Yeah.
I do have a question. And, and again, thank you, Lisa. This has been incredible. Gwen McFarland, thank you for your leadership, and the entire board with TLRC. On that page with the recommendations.
The millage?
Yep.
Yes.
And I know we were talking about $13 and $10, and sometimes you feel like the cable bill. They come in and say, "It's only going to be this," or your phone bill, and then it goes up.
The old pizza and a six-pack.
Yeah, the total we're talking about is $130.61, if we were to pass that, and, you know, we're dealing with people, a lot of people that are on fixed incomes.
Right.
Can you give us, when you said we can have options, I mean, obviously, we don't want mental health. We don't, we're not trying to cut anything, I don't think.
Right.
But I do need to keep my eye on this number. It's $130.61, not including other levies that are not put on by us, that people have.
And the other levies that are still just on the books.
Yeah, that are brewing in the background. So people are like, "Hold on," you know. So these things kind of add up, a la carte. So I just wanted to make sure that, on the mental health, I'd like to know what that option is.
Absolutely.
To not go under. And then, of course, the administrator, be able to get to us, because I can't really make an intelligent decision. Like you said, you're giving us the baton, which is right.
Right.
TLRC did their job. They were in the bubble of T A R, TLRC Tax Levy Dollars. We have multiple bubbles, and we had to look at the overall budget of every fund that we got available, every grant program we have available. And I'd just like to know from a total perspective. I think it'd be great anyway, because we're doing so many great things from, when you look at it from a totality versus just a silo situation. But if the minister, if you can get that as quick as possible, because then we can make, you know, at least myself, I can make a better decision on how we are able to make sure that we don't go under. But we also provide these services that are so needed and so important to our, to our county. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, I too want to thank Gwen McFarland, who is not with us today, but she's with us on Zoom. Thank you, Gwen, for your leadership. I know you've been doing this a long time. And thank you to Lisa Webb also for all the detailed information that you've been providing to us. It's, it's really a lot of work, and I look forward to the public hearings and engaging with the public on how we move forward here and get this accomplished. So thanks again to everybody involved.
Thank you so much.
I imagine, from this point, if you need anything additional from me, let me know, and I imagine the agencies will be reaching out to you directly as well.
Thank you so much, Lisa.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
So do we need a five-minute break, or we're good? Because this is a 30-minute presentation.
No break.
Well, I'm asking both of you. Okay. Yeah, okay. So we're going to take a five-minute break. Thanks, and we'll be right back.
Okay.
It's like right when you first do it, it doesn't, it's like it doesn't sink right, and then it's fine again. But it's like right when the sheer stream switched over each time, and then I think it just takes like 30 seconds or whatever.
I understand when it's connected. Well, the, well, the.
Yeah, we're trying to.
So I wanted to talk to you about.
What's in the line?
It's probably something that the commissioner mentioned in the next year. I don't know about this year. I still have you coming, but it's definitely more, I think it's something you want more to do. But I don't.
Hey, Jeff. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay, we're going to get started. It's been at least five minutes. So I thank everyone for their patience, and we are going to move forward to a very important agenda item, item number three, final disparity study report. I believe that Jeff is going to just say a couple words.
Thank you. We'll move forward.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just very briefly again, just for the public at home, for those who might be listening, for about the last year and a half.
These spend and procurement activity has been directed to small minority and women-owned business enterprises to the same degree that those enterprises are available and capable of performing that work in the community. So the purpose ultimately of the study is to determine whether or not there is a disparity that exists between what the county has spent, what we would expect to have spent and put towards those enterprises, and what we actually did over the course of a particular study period. And ultimately, whether any remedies are justified, as would be allowed by law. So as the board is aware, it's difficult, especially, I can't speak for every community throughout the United States, but especially as a county in Ohio, it's very difficult to make intentional progress towards some of these goals without the backing of a disparity study and the results of that. So the county, under the leadership of Robert Bell, and he's been working with Steve Love and Jean Ellington, brought in BBC Consulting for this work. We have with us here today Dr. Samir Bawa, who's the BBC Managing Director. So they gave an update to the board, I think a couple months back, may have been more recently than that, on progress, and are here today to provide the final results and recommendations on that report. So with that, I'd like to introduce Robert, just to provide some remarks before we launch into the study with Dr. Bawa.
Well, you guys have had a really, really heavy agenda, and I really beg your patience today with us. But I'm excited. I mean, I am excited about this. This is a momentous occasion for Hamilton County, and this study has been long, it's been formidable, it's been necessary, and it's been important. And make no mistake about it, it is a fast research project. It really is. You know, over a year long, looking at $1.3 million, $1.3 billion. We had the B O C C departments participate, we had elected offices, we had Metropolitan Sewer District, and I'm reminded of one of my favorite effective leadership gurus, Peter Drucker, who said, "If you can't measure it, you can't improve it." And Hamilton County has been willing to measure itself. Wow. I mean, I'm just really impressed with that, and it's because of you. It's because of the commission and administration that were at this point. And I think Hamilton County needs to be commended for that, I really do. And I also know that if measures show that we need to improve ourselves, that we're totally ready to do that. So I'd like to call up Samir Bawa, who will give you that report and let you know what we found.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you very much for having me, and it's a pleasure to be here, particularly because this is, I think, the longest I've ever gone without meeting a client as part of one of these studies in person. And we have COVID, so thank you for that, so I'm very happy to be here. I, along with my partner, Ms. Iris McClish, led the 2022 Hamilton County and the Metropolitan Sewer District Disparity Study. Iris is actually on the phone today, as is one of our associates, Stephanie Ayers, and if there are detailed questions that I can't answer about the data, one of those two will look it up and be able to chime in as well.
It doesn't want to go?
It doesn't want to go. There you go. Oh, I got it now. Thank you. So very quickly, I want to review our core objectives for the disparity study, and really, at the crux of it, was to measure the participation of minority and woman-owned businesses in Hamilton County and MSD contracting and procurement relative to their availability for that work, and then assess whether there are any differences or disparities between those measures. And I will unpack all of those terms in just a couple of minutes. We also provided an extensive set of quantitative and qualitative analyses of conditions throughout the local marketplace to understand whether minorities, women, and minority and woman-owned businesses face any barriers that make it more difficult for them to compete for and perform Hamilton County and MSD contracts. We collected a great deal of anecdotal evidence, as well as qualitative insights from business owners and other stakeholders to provide context for some of the quantitative analyses that we observed, as well as provide answers to the question of why some of those barriers might exist. And then finally, based on all that information, we have a number of recommendations that we think could help Hamilton County and MSD do a better job of encouraging the participation of small businesses, as well as minority and woman-owned businesses in their contracting moving forward. So right off the bat, I'd like to just sort of dive into our key results before I get into some of the details, and it'd be helpful if you just kept those in mind as we went along, because they really frame some of the analyses that I'll talk about on subsequent slides. So first, we observed substantial disparities for all relevant business groups across different sets of Hamilton County and MSD contracts, and that includes businesses owned by white women, black Americans, Hispanic Americans, Native Americans, and Asian Americans. In addition, even when Hamilton County and MSD were spending money with minority and woman-owned businesses, when we dug into those dollars, there seems to be some issues with those dollars being concentrated in relatively few hands. That is, the majority of the dollars going to minority and woman-owned businesses are actually going to a handful of firms in many cases for each one of these groups. And our analysis of the policies and programs that Hamilton County and MSD are using suggests that those current measures aren't sufficient to address barriers that still exist for minority and woman-owned businesses throughout the marketplace and those attempting to work with those agencies. Digging into the results themselves, I want to start by talking about what we call the availability analysis, which is designed to estimate the percentage of dollars we would expect minority and woman-owned businesses to receive on Hamilton County and MSD work. We use what's called a custom census approach to measuring availability, which is built on us first developing a phone book of all the businesses that have a location within the relevant marketplace and that do work directly relevant to how Hamilton County and MSD procure goods and services. Once we established that phone book, we went through it and contacted each and every firm and asked them to participate in a survey with us so that we could collect details about their business characteristics. So we asked them about their primary lines of work, their capacity to actually bid on or perform Hamilton County or MSD contracts or procurement, so we just asked them, "What's the largest contract you can compete for or perform?" Their roles as vendors, so do they work as prime contractors, subcontractors, or both? Their interest in doing contracting work for government organizations in the region, and then the race, ethnicity, and gender of their owners, regardless of whether they've made the decision to become certified as MBEs, WBEs, DBs, SBEs, or any other sort of certification. So this is just the ownership and control of their businesses. Once we collected that information, we compiled what we call an availability database that included the characteristics of each business that completed a survey with us, and allowed us to compare those characteristics to the characteristics of each individual contract and procurement that Hamilton County and MSD awarded during our study period. So that allowed us to figure out which firms could be potentially available for each contract and procurement, and then aggregate that information in a dollar-weighted way, so that at the end of the process, we had an estimate of the percentage of dollars that we would expect minority and woman-owned businesses to receive on that work, based on their characteristics and the characteristics of the prime contracts and subcontracts that both agencies awarded. So in total, and this circle just represents all of the dollars we include in our analysis for both Hamilton County and MSD combined, we looked at $1.3 billion of contracting and procurement, as Robert mentioned, and our analysis suggested that based on their availability, 26% of those dollars should be going to minority and woman-owned businesses, or $338 million. Availability varies from group to group, so the group that showed the highest level of availability was white woman-owned businesses at 8.8%, followed by black American-owned businesses at 7.2%, and Asian American-owned businesses at 7%. I'll talk about the utility of availability in just a bit, but another one of our core measures was to understand, how many dollars did minority and woman-owned businesses actually receive on Hamilton County and MSD contracts during our study period? So this is called the utilization analysis, and it's based on a trove of information we collected from Hamilton County and MSD itself, on the contracts and procurements it awarded during the study period, as well as the vendors that performed that work. And then, once we compiled that information, we went out and conducted more surveys with businesses that actually performed the work, so we could understand their basic characteristics. In terms of agency data, we based our analyses on professional services, construction and goods and non-professional services work that both agencies awarded between January 1st, 2016, and June 30th, 2021, so a five-and-a-half-year study period, and that included both prime contracts and subcontracts. Once we worked with both agencies to make sense of that information and make sure that we're representing it accurately, we went into the field, and for all the firms that did work or performed that work, we wanted to establish two key pieces of information. So first, what are their primary lines of work, which allows us to classify each contract appropriately? And second, what's the race, ethnicity, and gender of their owners? And again, that's regardless of whether they're certified in any sort of way. It's just about the race, ethnicity, and gender of ownership, per se. We integrated that information with the data that we collected from Hamilton County and MSD, and then we were able to calculate the percentage of dollars that actually went to minority and woman-owned businesses during our five-and-a-half-year study period. So going back to that $1.3 billion, and again, this includes both Hamilton County and MSD combined, our analysis suggested that 8.1% went to minority and woman-owned businesses, so about $106 million. And just like availability, utilization varied by group. So white woman-owned businesses showed the highest level of participation at 5.1%, followed by black American-owned businesses at 1.5%, and then Asian American-owned businesses at 1.3%. And then very little dollars, very few dollars, I should say, went to Hispanic American or Native American-owned businesses. Once we completed both the availability analysis and the utilization analysis, we were in position to compare those metrics, to see if any business groups were underutilized on either Hamilton County or MSD contracts. And we did that for each of the five relevant business groups, and also for different sets of contracts and procurement. So we looked at disparities that might exist in construction versus professional services, in prime contracts versus subcontracts, separately for Hamilton County versus MSD, so forth and so on. And we used a relatively straightforward calculation to make that assessment. So for a particular group and a particular set of contracts, we took the dollars that businesses from that group were actually awarded, divided by the dollars that we estimated them to be available for, times 100, and that results in what's called a disparity index or a disparity ratio. So a disparity index of 100 means that actual participation is largely in line with availability. It's also called parity between utilization and availability. A disparity index of less than 100 indicates a disparity such that that group for that set of contracts is being underutilized relative to their availability. And then importantly, a disparity index of 80 or less indicates substantial underutilization. So courts that have weighed in on minority and woman-owned business programs, as well as disparity study methodology, take substantial underutilization as an inference of discrimination against a group in the marketplace, and that often serves as support for the use of relatively strong race and gender conscious measures to help address corresponding barriers for those groups. So I'm going to show disparity analysis results in the same format. They'll all sort of look like this table. There'll be fewer words on the subsequent slides, but essentially, we have a line drawn at 100, which is our line of parity, and a dash line drawn at 80, which is our line indicating a substantial underutilization. Anything to the left of those lines means that that group showed a disparity index that was either indicating underutilization or substantial underutilization if it's under, if it's left of that 80 line. And then on the vertical axis, you have all the groups that we analyzed as part of the study. So all minority and woman-owned businesses considered together, white woman-owned businesses, and then Asian, black, Hispanic, and Native American-owned businesses. And this is a good time to also note that when we talk about racial/ethnic groups, so let's take Asian American-owned businesses in particular, or as an example, that includes businesses owned by both Asian men and Asian women. So when we talk about woman-owned businesses, we have those separated out as white woman-owned businesses. So the county's disparity indices on this chart are shown in the darker bars, and MSD's disparity indices are shown in the lighter gray bars. So starting with the county, when you look at all minority and woman-owned businesses together, they showed a disparity index of 52. What that means is, is that minority and woman-owned businesses considered together earned 52 cents of every dollar you would expect them to receive based on their availability for county work. And for the most part, that's a substantial disparity, and for the most part, that extends to each individual business group that we examined as well. So Asian Americans, black Americans, Hispanic Americans, and Native American-owned businesses all showed substantial disparities on county contracts and procurements. The only exception was white woman-owned businesses, which showed a disparity index of 86, so they're still showing a disparity, just not one that falls to the level that many courts consider to be substantial disparities. A note on white woman-owned businesses, in total, on county contracts, they received about $54 million during our five-and-a-half-year study period. $35 million of those dollars went to a single white woman-owned business. They're headquartered in St. Louis, Missouri. They have an office here in Hamilton County or in Cincinnati, the Cincinnati area as well. But that does suggest that there may be some issues of concentration that I brought up earlier in the presentation, that more than 60% of the dollars, or about 60% of the dollars, went to a single white woman-owned business when you look at that group alone. Looking at disparity indices for MSD overall, you see substantial disparities across the board. So all minority and woman-owned businesses showed a disparity index of 17, and then all individual groups also showed substantial disparities, many of them in single digits. We also looked at these data for different contract sets, and one important comparison that we made was between outcomes for minority and woman-owned businesses between prime contracts and subcontracts. So minority and woman-owned businesses, in general, tend to be smaller in size, or at least many of them are small in size, and as a result, their entryway into government contracting tends to be as subcontractors. So it's useful to look at outcomes on subcontracts versus prime contracts to see if they are showing any more success for contracts that are more accessible to them, generally speaking. In the case of the county, that isn't necessarily true. So we saw substantial disparities for all groups for both prime contracts and subcontracts, with the one exception being white woman-owned businesses on prime contracts. And again, that is primarily due to the fact that there is that one white woman-owned business that received the majority of the dollars, and that was as a prime contractor. In all other cases, you see that minority and woman-owned businesses are showing substantial disparities across the board. In terms of MSDGC, so they're doing a little better on subcontracts, and that could be a function of some of the programs that they have in place that are designed to encourage small business participation as subcontractors primarily, but by and large, you still see some important disparities here. So all minority and woman-owned businesses. and then Asian, black, Hispanic, and Native American-owned businesses. And this is a good time to also note that when we talk about racial/ethnic groups, so let's take Asian American-owned businesses in particular, or as an example, that includes businesses owned by both Asian men and Asian women. So when we talk about woman-owned businesses, we have those separated out as white woman-owned businesses. So the county's disparity indices on this chart are shown in the darker bars, and MSD's disparity indices are shown in the lighter gray bars. So starting with the county, when you look at all minority and woman-owned businesses together, they showed a disparity index of 52. What that means is, is that minority and woman-owned businesses considered together earned 52 cents of every dollar you would expect them to receive based on their availability for county work. And for the most part, that's a substantial disparity, and for the most part, that extends to each individual business group that we examined as well. So Asian Americans, black Americans, Hispanic Americans, and Native American-owned businesses all showed substantial disparities on county contracts and procurements. The only exception was white woman-owned businesses, which showed a disparity index of 86, so they're still showing a disparity, just not one that falls to the level that many courts consider to be substantial disparities. A note on white woman-owned businesses, in total, on county contracts, they received about $54 million during our five-and-a-half-year study period. $35 million of those dollars went to a single white woman-owned business. They're headquartered in St. Louis, Missouri. They have an office here in Hamilton County or in Cincinnati, the Cincinnati area as well. But that does suggest that there may be some issues of concentration that I brought up earlier in the presentation, that more than 60% of the dollars, or about 60% of the dollars, went to a single white woman-owned business when you look at that group alone. Looking at disparity indices for MSD overall, you see substantial disparities across the board. So all minority and woman-owned businesses showed a disparity index of 17, and then all individual groups also showed substantial disparities, many of them in single digits. We also looked at these data for different contract sets, and one important comparison that we made was between outcomes for minority and woman-owned businesses between prime contracts and subcontracts. So minority and woman-owned businesses, in general, tend to be smaller in size, or at least many of them are small in size, and as a result, their entryway into government contracting tends to be as subcontractors. So it's useful to look at outcomes on subcontracts versus prime contracts to see if they are showing any more success for contracts that are more accessible to them, generally speaking. In the case of the county, that isn't necessarily true. So we saw substantial disparities for all groups for both prime contracts and subcontracts, with the one exception being white woman-owned businesses on prime contracts. And again, that is primarily due to the fact that there is that one white woman-owned business that received the majority of the dollars, and that was as a prime contractor. In all other cases, you see that minority and woman-owned businesses are showing substantial disparities across the board. In terms of MSDGC, so they're doing a little better on subcontracts, and that could be a function of some of the programs that they have in place that are designed to encourage small business participation as subcontractors primarily, but by and large, you still see some important disparities here. So all minority and woman-owned businesses considered together show substantial disparities for both prime contracts and subcontracts. All individual groups show substantial disparities for prime contracts, which are shown in the darker bars. And then white woman-owned businesses, Hispanic American-owned businesses, and Native American-owned businesses also show substantial disparities on subcontracts. Asian Americans and black Americans do not show substantial disparities for subcontracts, but when you take that in for, when you take those data and combine them with prime contracts, you still see large disparities overall, just because there isn't enough volume of subcontracts to make up for the disparities that we observed overall over prime contracts. We also wanted to look at outcomes that result from the different small business plans and small business programs that the county and MSD have in place. So one question that is reasonable to ask is, are sort of race and gender-neutral measures, measures designed to encourage all small businesses to participate in county and MSD contracting, is that sufficient to address these barriers? So we started answering that question by first looking at the SBE plans that the county now uses. So during the study period, during the earlier part of the study period, the county didn't use SBE plans, and then in the last year of it, they started requiring prime contractors to submit plans as part of bids and proposals, outlining the efforts they were making to engage with small businesses, independent of race, ethnicity, and gender. And those sorts of, those sorts of programs sometimes had the indirect effect of also helping minority and woman-owned businesses, because so many of them are small in size and may work as subcontractors and can team as subcontractors on these projects. There, these evidence, these data suggest that there was limited success of the use of SBE plans to address disparities. So the four SBE plans went into effect, there were substantial disparities for all groups except for white woman-owned businesses. And then after those SBE plans went into full effect in the last year of our study period, there are still substantial disparities for all groups, and actually including white woman-owned businesses as well, which is probably just a function, again, of that one white woman-owned business and when that firm got its, got the majority of its dollars, which was earlier in the study period. Similarly, MSDGC uses small business goals on many of its contracts. So as part of that goals program, prime contractors have to meet a percentage goal for all small businesses on the projects they're bidding on or proposing on, and they can meet those goals either by making subcontracting commitments with certified small businesses or showing good-faith efforts, that they tried to do so, but for whatever reason, might have failed, and those efforts, they have to demonstrate that those efforts were sufficient and genuine. So we looked at outcomes for minority and woman-owned businesses on contracts MSD awarded with SBE goals and without SBE goals, with the idea that if those SBE goals are also effective in encouraging minority and woman-owned business participation, you might see fewer disparities or some improvement in outcomes. That isn't the case. So we see substantial disparities, again, across the board, and if anything, and this could be because of contract size or other factors, you actually see worse outcomes on contracts that MSD awarded without SBE goals than with them. So that doesn't necessarily suggest anything's wrong with the SBE program, but at the very least, it suggests that it's not effective in improving outcomes for minority and woman-owned businesses in particular. And I should mention, as part of the county's small business program, not only do they have those plans, but they also use SBE goals in awarding certain contracts as well. But, so on the previous slide, that was sort of the aggregate effect of their small business measures. Just as a visualization of all the different contract sets for which we assessed disparities, we put together this table where, on the vertical axis, these are all the different contract sets we looked at, or most of the different contract sets we looked at, and then going across horizontally are each one of the individual groups. And each one of these green dots indicates that for that group, for that contract set, we observed a substantial disparity. And I think the takeaway here is, you see a lot of green dots. That is, there are substantial disparities for almost all contract sets, for almost all groups. White woman-owned businesses are faring a little better, not on MSDGC contracts, but certainly on county work, but a lot of that is likely due to the fact, again, to that one white woman-owned business that received more than 60% of the total dollars that went to those businesses. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, a number of recommendations came out of the disparity study and things that we think is, are important for the county and MSD to consider moving forward in terms of refining its policies and programs. I'm going to go over some key recommendations, but in Chapter 10 of our report, there's many more, more than 20 different recommendations related to procurement policies, program measures, and just administration of a program and data collection and things like that. But there are a handful that I wanted to talk about here today, beginning with overall aspirational goals. So we think that it might be useful for the county and MSD to consider establishing overall aspirational goals for the participation of minority and woman-owned businesses in their work. This is not a race or gender-based measure, per se, but rather, it's aspirational in the sense that the county and MSD would set this, and then at the end of the year, sort of monitor their spend with minority and woman-owned businesses through a variety of efforts and see if they're achieving that goal, and if they haven't achieved that goal, make changes, make refinements to its programs and policies to meet that goal the following year. So it's really a tool that helps unify some organizations around their supplier diversity objectives, and also keeps the organizations internally and externally accountable for their use and participation of minority and woman-owned businesses. One of the specific measures we think that the county and MSD could consider in encouraging the participation of minority and woman-owned businesses, and this is a race and gender-based recommendation, is the use of minority and woman-owned business contracting goals. So based on the fact that we see substantial disparities for all groups across key contract sets that both the county and MSD awarded during the study period, we think that it would be useful for the county and MSD to think about whether it is appropriate to set contracting goals on individual contracts and procurements they award for the participation of minority and woman-owned businesses in particular. So lots of organizations across the country use programs like this. There are a ton of legal considerations and policy considerations to make, but the gist of it is, is that county purchasing staff and officers, when they're soliciting a contracting opportunity, and this would go for MSD as well, would sit down and set a goal based on the availability of minority and woman-owned businesses for the work involved, the size of the contract, other factors as well, and then prime contractors, as part of their bids or proposals, would have to meet that goal, either by making subcontract commitments with certified minority and woman-owned businesses, being certified minority and woman-owned businesses themselves, or if those fail, showing good-faith efforts, that they made genuine efforts to bring in minority and woman-owned businesses into their proposal or the process, and failed to do so. And then the county or MSD would assess whether those good-faith efforts were sufficient, and this would be as a condition of award. So the goals would ideally vary from contract to contract based on the variance of the factors I mentioned. Sometimes the county or MSD wouldn't even set a goal on a contract. The idea is that in aggregate, the use of these goals would be another tool the county could use to directly encourage the participation of minority and woman-owned businesses. In terms of some of the legal considerations that the county would have to make, the most important is that programs like this have to meet the strict scrutiny standard of constitutional review, which means that they have to, that the county has to show a compelling governmental interest for the use of those programs, which means that there just has to be evidence that discrimination in the larger marketplace exists that's impacting the county's own contracting procurement. And then second, the use of those programs have to be narrowly tailored to meet the objectives of the program, and we can talk about that, and we do at length in the report, but that is the most important consideration in terms of implementing a program of this sort, and often, when there are substantial disparities for many groups across many contract sets, this is something that organizations often consider implementing to help address those barriers. We also think, based on disparity study results, as well as measures that we've seen other organizations use, that implementing subcontracting minimums might be worth considering as well. So a subcontracting minimum would entail, much like setting a small business goal or a minority or woman-owned business goal, based on subcontracting opportunities involved in a project, the county or MSD would set a minimum percentage of subcontracting when they're soliciting a project, and prime contractors would have to meet that minimum with their, with their subcontract, with subcontractors of their choosing, independent of race, ethnicity, and gender, or show good-faith efforts that they try to bring subcontractors into the process. The idea behind these is that the less work that large prime contractors are self-performing means more opportunities for small businesses in the marketplace, and you're bringing more firms into the county and MSD's contracting processes. Another race and gender-neutral measure that the county could consider are small business price and evaluation preferences, so whether it be an RFP or a low-bid bidding environment, certified small businesses, or the involvement of certified small business prime contractor, or subcontractors would earn bidders and proposers evaluation points if it's an RFP or price discounts if it's, if it's a low-bid award. And again, the idea is the same, that it is incentivizing prime contractors and firms to either come in with subcontracting, with small business partners, or it is encouraging small businesses themselves to bid on Hamilton County and MSD work as prime contractors themselves. There are also a number of professional services that the county, according to county procurement policies, are not subject to competitive bidding requirements. By and large, the fewer, the fewer competitive requirements on a contract, the less supplier diversity, because buyers, purchasing staff tend to go with what's comfortable. If they've used a firm in the past, they'll try to use them again, especially if the work was successful, and that limits the different number of, or the pool of vendors that are coming in and competing for work. So anything the county and MSD can do to encourage competitive bidding is a good thing for supplier diversity. In the case of professional services, there are a number of sub-industries that are exempt from competitive bidding. That includes engineering services, it includes construction management, legal services, accounting, physicians, there's a number of these where, to the degree possible, if the county or MSD could consider opening those up to competitive bidding processes, obviously, there's more administrative burden when you do that, but we think it also helps to encourage supplier diversity in those areas, and currently, that's not necessarily the case. And then one other consideration that we wanted to highlight is related to prompt pay. So MSD actually has very strong prompt pay policies in place, so they are required to pay their prime contractors within 30 days of approving an invoice, and then those prime contractors have to pay subcontractors within 10 days of getting paid from MSD, and if they don't, then the juice starts running. They have to pay interest for every day that they're late past 10 days. The county actually doesn't have any established prompt pay policies, and we think it's important for the county not only to have prompt pay to prime contractors, but also to get involved in payment between prime contractors and subcontractors, because many of those subcontractors are small businesses, many of those small businesses are minority and woman-owned businesses, and they simply can't afford, or can afford much less, to wait long periods of time to get paid on work that they've completed, because that helps them make payroll, it helps them have capital on hand to get their next project started, and access to capital is already a problem, which we talk about a great deal in the report, and any delays in payment make that even worse. So establishing prompt payment is something that lots of government organizations do, and we have models from across the country on how to enforce prompt payment between the agency and prime contractors, and then in turn, between prime contractors and subcontractors that we're happy to discuss and share as well. As I said, there's a lot more detail about these six considerations in Chapter 10 of the report, as well as details about additional considerations as well. And now, I'd like to open it up to answer any questions, unless they're questions about levies, which I don't know anything about.
Wow, a lot of great information, a lot of information that was given to us we've been talking about, but we have to have the ability to prove what we thought may be going on. So I applaud the group that has been involved in this, and of course, I'll talk about recommendations in a minute, but I was wondering about the level of cooperation when you started the phone calls and the surveys, were the businesses pretty cooperative, or the percentage that were involved in this process?
Yeah, by and large, they were. So we, you know, our response rates have been steadily increasing, and part of that reason is that we use a survey firm, and we started before we conducted the Hamilton County work, that we've worked together with, for years, and they're just great. They're great at getting, when they get people, when they contact people, either via telephone or online, that they get them to complete a survey. So our response rates, I don't know what it was off the top of my head, but I think that it was in the high teens, 20%, which for business-to-business surveys is quite good. So we were very happy with that. You know, we would worry if it was much less than our other disparity studies, but right now, we're in an upward trend of response rates, so we're really happy with.
That's great. I'm sure they wanted to tell their story, and hopefully, that will end up with getting more business. So I think about, one of your recommendations that I didn't really see up there is the marketing aspect of it, that a lot of people don't know that there's an opportunity to bid, if we are bidding, or that, for instance, our janitorial RFP we put out for this whole building, and we had suggested, well, I suggested that maybe you just have a smaller business, maybe do two floors, and another business, you know, do the other, instead of bidding on the whole building. So I think the problem is, one of the problems, lots of problems you brought up, but we have solutions, I'm sure, is that even when they find out about the opportunities, even though they're qualified, oftentimes are not considered, and so that's what we need to look at. Why are people putting their names in the pool and it's not coming out of the hat? So of course, we need to look at that. We've talked about diversifying the people that are chosen. I think what's happened with this study, and I'm just so happy about it, is that we have something that we can look at, and it's not just, we think this is happening, we've heard contractors say that they can't get an opportunity to work here, and we're doing great things, but we need to do even greater things and then be more inclusive, and the recommendations are awesome, and so we just need to move forward quickly, because I think about the ones who have put in for different positions, different opportunities, and they just say, forget about the county. But the county is doing great work, and we need to make sure the ones that are qualified to do it are considered. I was really surprised when you said about the competitive bidding. I know you said there are different areas that don't have to have the bidding, but we really need to look at that. I had, when I first came, wanted to sit in during the bidding process, and so by the time whoever is going to get this contract, they've already somewhat been decided, so me sitting in, watching that process would not help. But I thank the whole group that's here, all the work that's been done, and so now we have something to put our finger on through statistical information that we need to do better, and I'm sure I promise to do better, and that our board will also, and we're going to move forward very quickly to make sure that we're more inclusive of the people that put in for positions. Thank you so much for your report.
Of course.
Vice President Reese?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. I think the full report is about 800, almost pages.
Something like that, yeah, sorry about that.
So I may have questions, it's in the 800 pages.
Yeah.
I'm working my way through it.
Absolutely. I can tell you which sections you may not have to read either.
Good. Although I love this, like people love football or basketball, you know? You know, I love both of those sports too, so I get in the weeds on it.
Yeah.
And coming from a black-owned, family-owned business, this is how I grew up. So seeing, and this is before we had disparity studies, we had contract compliance. Those things are just not out there. And so just growing up with that, and then going on to a historically black college and university down south, and seeing so many business owners, and then understanding and seeing, I'm like, wow, why is the South doing better than the North? They've got contracts, they're doing business with the government. And I have a philosophy that's really simple, and I know that I'm going to continue to fight this at every level. And my point is, we cannot have taxation without participation. I think we need to start this conversation off, because this is not a handout or a carve-out. These are companies, small businesses, women-owned, black-owned, minority-owned, who, for some reason, Uncle Sam can find them. We're equal on tax day and unequal every other day. It's the only group of businesses that have to go through this on a regular basis to prove that they exist and that they are minority. But on tax day, somehow, our Treasury Department can find them. Somehow, the federal government can find them and say, you owe this money. And they say, you are a small business, and you are legitimate. So if somehow, we can merge the two of those. One of the, so one of the things we're trying to correct is that there's a group of people that have small businesses, services, that are qualified and bona fide, but have been left out and locked out. And when I look around the room, it's great to see these familiar faces. Steve Love and Mr. Ellington, and so many. But I also wonder, man, they don't follow me from City Hall to the State House, and now we're at the county, and we're talking about the same thing. Minority businesses being locked out. I think that certainly, our board has taken a bold step, no offense to your bold list. But you know how I feel about it. I think what's bold is when we get to the contracts. I think Mr. Bell understands that, that we're not trying to get on the list, but we're trying to get in the marketplace. And so what we're trying to do is figure out a way, how do we open up the marketplace? So that everyone can participate and have an equal shot at the American dream. And to do that, unfortunately, we see that nationally and internationally. We saw it on national TV with now Supreme Court Justice Katanji Brown. When she was up there, she was overqualified, and we saw it on TV. Said, man, how could you not? I mean, this woman has the education, I mean, she got it all. And still, has to go through a scrutiny process that's tough. That's what's happening with women-owned businesses, black-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses. They go through a tougher scrutiny because they have to get certification. It costs money to certify. There's no need to certify if I can't get no contracts. So we have to now move from certification to contract signings. And I want to acknowledge our administrator. When I got here, I know he's probably here, he says, I hear it from her all the time. I said, we got to change the DNA of Hamilton County. We have been doing business a certain way for decades and decades. And sometimes, it's hard to break that mold, and that's what we're doing. This board has been breaking up that mold. And my philosophy, when I got elected, about 212,000 people, I said, I'm coming to shake it up. I'm giving, to open up the process, and I want to make sure that everybody has an equal shot. So your presentation has been great. I want to get into a couple areas, if you don't mind.
No.
That I think are critical. Number one, I want to put on your list that we have since hiring your company, we have not only an Equity and Inclusion Office, but we have now an Office of Small Business. The two will come together, and we would like to see in the recommendation how those two can correlate, although they might, our small business is for every small business, but we want to make sure that we have an umbrella. And that umbrella, our goal is to be the number-one county for small businesses. COVID has provided a reset, and McDonald's is known for the Big Mac, Frisco's is known for the Big Boy. We want to be known as the place for small businesses, and diverse small businesses. So I'd like to make sure that they're included as they're putting their presentation together for us through our administrator, what that Small Business Office will do in concert and partnership with our Equity and Inclusion Office. Number two, I wanted to ask you, in your presentation, you combined us with MSD. And it's no secret that we have an interesting infrastructure agreement as it relates to MSD. So we kind of control the county, although we control MSD money, but we don't really control MSD 100%.
Right.
So I wanted to make sure, in this model, if you will, that Phase One would look at, what can the county do? And remove MSD, and they got to, of course, look at what we do, and we'll oversight that. But we need to know, what can we do, what is our numbers, as it relates to just all the things that Hamilton County falls up under our board?
Yep, and just a little context for that.
Yeah.
MSD was added to the process a little later. And throughout the report, their numbers are separate. The county has a separate set of analyses, and MSD has a separate set of analyses. We combined them for the first two slides for a couple of reasons. Mostly just illustration of how those analyses work, and also just for time, to make sure that I could get to the disparity.
No, no, that's good. I just want to make sure, in our recommendations section.
Exactly, yeah. Our recommendations are mostly geared toward county policies.
Got you.
Because that's really what sort of guides, that's what guided our work and our review. And then where it's unique and specific, we have some MSD recommendations as well, but we try to keep the two separate.
Okay, and it's good for us to see it. I just want to have it compartmentalized.
Yep.
For our component. Now, you referenced several times that the women category, the white women category, was kind of padded in that we had one company. You said they're out of St. Louis, but got an office here. And I wanted to find out, what area of work is that? Is that professional services, is that consulting, is that construction? Where do they fall?
They would be, this is a question actually for Stephanie. My guess is they're going to be a goods and other services provider. They do transit, essentially. So they're a transit firm. I guess it just depends on where we end up classifying them, but it would either be professional services or goods and other services.
I'm just wondering, are they in the bid side or the non-bid side of things?
Well, if they're goods and other services, they'd be on the bid side. And if they're in professional services, they'd be an RFP side, right?
I think it's goods and services.
I think so too.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to know that. If they're in the non-bid side of things, or in the bid side of things.
My understanding is that they do get, I mean, they do put out, they have a bid, but it's an extended contract.
You got, the people watching, they want to hear from you. What are you saying? Come on up, director.
Yep, my understanding that it is a bid process by job and family services.
Okay, so that is a bid. But we'll double-check it, just to make sure.
Yeah, we definitely will.
Because that seems kind of odd, that they're outbidding everybody. And you said it's a single source. But that's what leads that category because of the size of the amount of the contract, right?
Yeah, but it's also a very niche piece of work. So it's medical transit, medical transportation. So I would imagine that it's probably not just outbidding other competitors. It may be that it's so specialized that this is where their dollars are going. But it's also one of those things worth mentioning, only because there isn't a great solution for it from a statistics or a research perspective, because they're not so big as to be, for example, a statistical outlier. But I think that it's worth mentioning because it also runs counter to the spirit of a program like this, right? That these aren't designed so that in aggregate, one business gets the dollars to make women-owned businesses look better in aggregate. It seems to be that what the county may want is sort of a diverse set of diverse businesses.
Yeah.
And so that information to us is informative for you all, just to realize that, at least in this one category and in others as well, there are a few big players even within the category, and they tend to benefit from small business measures and things like that more than other businesses in the same racial, ethnic, or gender categories.
Yeah, I know, I got that. I understand you're showing that, don't look at this category and think it's a bunch of white women businesses
Right.
having opportunities. That numbers with one. I just wanted to know, was it on the non-bid side versus the bid side? Because I know we're talking about professional services versus contractual services. And so I wanted to know what that, where did that fail, and why, you know, where did that fail, and see if those were some other issues.
Oh, good. Iris, you're on mute, but I think you're live.
Hi, thanks very much, this is Cyrus. Yeah, so they fell into goods and other services, and I think Robert is exactly right. That was a, it was certainly a bidded contract through jobs and family services. But I believe that that was open to competitive bidding, but it would have been on the bid side.
Great, thank you. The other issue I wanted to bring up to you was, President Dumas touched on it before, and I think going back to this part, did you look at anything in terms of breaking up contracts? Because when we look at breaking up contracts, and what are some of the barriers? Because doing, if you're a small business, doing business with the county is very difficult as is. We do a reimbursable program, and we're not the fastest in town with it. The paperwork is extensive. You've got to, you know, you put up almost everything, you know. You own, as people would say, you got everything on the line and your underwear. It's very difficult with the paperwork. It's not that way with our bigger contracts. We might have a hypothetical, a Port Authority contract at $2 million is two pages, and a $150,000 contract is 20 pages. And that might be because they're a smaller group. But had you looked at some of those barriers, breaking up bids, looking at some of the barriers, bonding requirements, insurance requirements. I understand we're putting extra squeeze insurance requirements on folks. And our reimbursement program, certainly, we want to be responsible. We're not just throwing money out there. But are there other counties across the country that might have something that breaks up contracts, make it easier for insurance opportunities, and break some of these barriers down?
Yeah, so we have a lot of information on contract size and project size, especially in government contracting being a barrier. Lots of people mention that. We also have a consideration around unbundling. You know, the upside, of course, from a diversity perspective is that if you have 10, $100,000 contracts instead of $1 million project, you are attracting more minority and woman-owned businesses for the reasons that you talked about. It's easier to bond for that work, it's easier to get insured for that work, so forth and so on. Of course, the downside is the administrative burden it puts on the organization. That just managing 10 related contracts instead of one project kind of takes some of the GC responsibilities and puts them with the county instead of with whoever, with whoever you hire. So that's kind of the trade-off. But lots of organizations talk about this. I can't think of sort of a concrete set of best practices that they've done. It's, to be honest, a lot of lip service around, yes, we're thinking about that, that would definitely help. But I can't think of a great model, I guess.
Got you. Well, we want to move out of lip service and get to action. So we can be the model, that everybody comes here, and they'll pay these guys the big bucks to replicate what we do. Prompt pay, you talked about MSD, so I wrote that law. That's when the county, the city, and MSD had to do what the city wanted you to do. I had a chance to see what was going on nationally, and that was the issue that a lot of businesses were saying, no matter what your color is, this helps small businesses across the
For sure, yeah.
board, but particularly extra for minority businesses. I know that we have to look at what, because I don't think we write the checks. It's got to be us and partner with the auditor and those kind of things. And I also put the language in there, that if every day you don't, if they got all the right paperwork, they can't just sit on someone's desk and say, well, I'll get to it when I get to it. Because you started losing money. And that really got the government entities to get to moving on these, get these things processed.
Yeah.
Because if we find out you're helping lose us money, then you got to go. So your job is on the line, and you have now the pressure that the small business has. You just don't sit there and say, I got my check, and we'll get to you when we get to you. So prompt pay helped a lot. We did tie that, if we, I just want to put this out there. You got to have the prompt pay piece, it has to have the penalty piece. Without the penalty piece, it's not going to, it's going to be lip service.
Right.
But then also, we got to pull in possibly the treasurer's office because they determined what bank we use. The issue with prompt pay is, we want, if we do prompt pay, you can go to the bank, and the bank would acknowledge that the government's check is good, and that you can now borrow working capital against the contract, and not have to give up your house, your car, and everything else, because they know the government is guaranteed to pay you in a prompt way with a timetable. But you got to also have the banking institution. Where we put our money as public people, we put the public's money, it has to be tied to a bank that is not discriminatory and that would honor our prompt pay policy. And also, on the backside, be able to provide the working capital. So hopefully, I know you're 800 pages, but if it's not in there, and when we get to the real meat of the recommend, I know these are just components, then we got to get to the whole meat. But I think that that is, like you said, it actually works. So those are the things that I wanted to, just right now, just wanted to highlight. And I think you're absolutely, we do need to look at the subcontracting because we're not doing well in that area. But that's the area, if it were to be done correctly, maybe can reduce those barriers. We do that all the time with contracts. We just had council on aging. And then we said, hey, we want you to partner with smaller organizations. And so they're able to do all the paperwork and all that, but then the small organization could be in there. So we are making some improvement. I want to, I don't want to clap, because every week, we're voting on millions and millions. And so when I got here to see one quarter, we had $1,400. That's it, for every minority group that existed, for the banks. It ain't a clap. We do billions, we speak in billions. So I'm not going to get, I give us credit on a lot of stuff, but we're not there yet. And I'd like to know, after this, how fast do we move now from, you gave us the data, we needed the numbers, for what we already knew, but we needed the numbers because that's the law. How do we move from this to now, let's get some people? Because people are now saying they may not apply for these contracts. Because the other thing, they need to know that we're real. And if you're not real, what happens is they say, oh, won't you apply? And you go and fill out all this paperwork, and they just want to put on a list. We tried, you on the list. And they're not serious. And we are serious. Our administration, to our board, to our administration, we want to get it out, we're serious. So I don't know what happens, I'd like to know how we, where do we move from here?
From here, so this is the trove of information. Next is program development. And, you know, whoever you want to sort of help develop the program, that can start now. And, you know, it can, it can, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made along the way. And to be frank, Robert probably needs some help, because I just don't. I was surprised to learn that Robert's office is Robert. It's a lot.
We added two now, you brought it up to three, you moving on up.
It's a lot to put on a single individual. And, you know, there's just a lot of moving parts with compliance, with setting goals, with figuring out who's going to do that, how that's going to get done, what that process looks like. All that work can literally start tomorrow. And, you know, the sooner that that work gets going, the sooner that you have a program that is effective with details and that you can stand up. Yeah, it's really, it's really in the county's hands at this point, once they've sort of wrapped their heads around the implications of all these results, which we're happy to help with.
Madam President, they done passed us two patons, one in each hand. I'm ready to get going, so quicker we can move, I'm in. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
I'll answer a question when he's done.
Okay.
About what next steps.
Sure, okay. Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you, thank you for this report. I told you earlier, it's just very thorough, it's very well done, it's readable. I mean, it's a digestible report that gets us to where we need to be. And I appreciate the partners in the room. Thank you for helping move us in this direction. It's a critical moment in time for the county. It's, it's a critical moment in time for the county. So, Robert, I agree, it's a momentous occasion for the county. We passed, I think it was about two years ago, the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis in Hamilton County. There were three tenants related to that resolution. One was training for the sheriff's office. One was expansion of your office, including the word equity. And one was the disparity study. And so here we are, making good on our promise of two years ago with the completed report that gives us the opportunity to move. And so it's an important report. It's a critical moment in time that will help change the culture of the county. And now we can change the practices of the county to reflect what you have been hearing from this board as to where we want to go. So legally, we needed to do it. I'm glad we're there. It took some time. But it's well done, and I'm, I'm sure that we can count on it to enable us to do some of these things that we have been not able to do in the past that haven't moved the numbers like any of us want to see, right? We're just not where we need to be. So as Commissioner Reese said, I think it proved to us what we think we already knew. You know, but we just needed to have it in writing, and we needed to have the proof. So thank you for that. I have a question related to your considerations or your recommendations.
Yes.
Especially interested in number two, the implement contract-specific goals for the participation of minority and women-owned businesses. So you talked about how you evaluate that when we are working with a business to make sure they understand that these are our goals and these are things, you know, critical points that you need to meet. You mentioned the evaluation process happening as the bids were coming in. So help me understand that a little bit better.
Yeah, so it, it would carry on for the life of the project, but I can talk about that, too. That's more of a compliance issue. But really, these goals, when they're effective, are condition of award goals. So if you're going out for, let's say, a $20 million construction contract, there is an internal team of experts that sit down. So you would sit down with Public Works, or Robert's office would sit down with Public Works, and we'd, you'd look at availability for the different work involved and say, it feels reasonable that this is probably a 20% goal, looking at availability. We know other construction work going on, let's say, with the city that might eat into some of the capacity of minority and women-owned businesses. But all those factors, let's set a 20% goal on this because that's, that seems a reasonable aggregation of all the different factors. And then you'd sort of document that. That would go in solicitation documents. And what prime contractors would see is, this is still lowest and most responsive, lowest responsive bidder. But as a condition of award, as a condition of being responsive, you have to come in with 20% going to minority and women-owned businesses. Or good faith efforts that you tried to meet that 20% and failed to do so, but it can't just be sort of perfunctory, check-the-box exercises. It's a narrative about who you reached out to, what happened with those negotiations, a variety of other good faith efforts that could be counted. And that would be treated equally as actually meeting the goal. But the idea is, is that it can't be a release valve. They can't just opt to submit good faith efforts because it's easier. They have to go through the process, and hopefully, in most cases, that's actually leading to participation. The good faith efforts exist just because programs like this have to show flexibility. Otherwise, it's essentially a quota, and that's legally dicey. So that's basically how it would work. And then usually, when we've worked with organizations to set up these programs, you, you sort of evaluate the bids in, in, in more or less the same way. You, you look at the apparent low bidder. Have they met all the contracting requirements? And one of them is, have they met the contracting goal requirements? And if they have through commitments, they're good. They're the low bidder and apparent awardee. If they haven't, did they submit good faith efforts? And are they sufficient? If they are, again, they're the apparent awardee. Everything's good. If they didn't, their bid gets tossed out as non-responsive, and you go to the next bidder. So it's a program that has teeth, but it's also the most direct way. And if, a direct way to encourage minority and women-owned business participation, and designed carefully and correctly, it's effective and legally defensible. It's just that you have to dot all the i's and cross all the t's.
Well, it, it's the one that seems the most obvious to me.
Yep.
You know, this, if we're trying to reach a goal, this one helps us reach the goal pretty directly, it seems to me. As opposed to the more aspirational goals in item number one, develop aspiration. We've already been doing aspirational goals. You know, I think the idea is to get us in a more direct line with having percentages that we're trying to meet and make everybody know that's contracting with the county, these are the percentages we're trying to meet, and kind of hold their feet to the fire. So then, as, as we evaluate that, and they commit to 20%, say, then on the compliance side, as you say, what happens then?
So organizations that don't have great programs will do everything up until award and then forget that prime contractors and businesses are still businesses. So if it's cheaper for them and better for business not to meet their commitment, there's a good chance they might do that. So compliance along the way is important where they are submitting the payments they made to their subcontractors, which ones of those are minority and women-owned, which ones of those were committed to, to meet the goal at the beginning, and make sure through the end of the project that whatever they committed to those subcontractors at the beginning is what they got through the life of the project. And if it's not, they have to answer to the county as to why there's a difference. Is that difference justified? And sometimes organizations will have retainers in place or withhold final payment until they're satisfied with the explanation they get. Or the prime contractor figures it out and gets the money they committed at the beginning of the project to win the project to the subcontractors that they used for those commitments. So it is an ongoing compliance process that goes on through the life of it and checking in with the county that, hey, this project's supposed to be 18 months. It's now 14 months, and we don't see the payments to minority and women-owned subcontractors that you committed to them, what's going on, those sorts of conversations and explanations along the way.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Just have one, one other question related to the percentages. So, and I met with Robert earlier about the report. So it's, correct me if I'm, I'm just trying to understand this. So as we do this, and, you know, you, you have this, and you evaluated availability of certain services to make sure we understand that we're not overshooting something, right? If it's not available, we, we shouldn't be reaching for a certain goal. So the idea is to have a goal that is reasonable and within the parameters that you guys have investigated. Is this 26, or 26% then, that minority and women-owned business, is that the threshold?
No. So I, this is kind of why it's helpful to have that overall aspirational goal as well. That 26% really represents, over the course of some period of time, like a year, one might expect 26% of your dollars to go to minority and women-owned businesses based on their availability. The race and gender-conscious contract goals that we're talking about is one tool to help get to that 26%. But it should be tailored specifically to the realities of the contract itself. So sometimes that goal could be much higher than 26% because of the work involved. Sometimes it could be way lower. Sometimes you might look at a contract and say, this, there actually shouldn't be a goal on this because there's just no availability here, and we, it just wouldn't be fair to force prime contractors to find this if we can't even think of where they would go looking for it. So the idea is, in aggregate, the use of contract-specific goals is a powerful tool to help you get to that 26%. But it has to work in concert with all the other things that we've talked about as well. So small business goals are a good idea. Subcontracting goals don't necessarily, or using race-conscious goals don't preclude you from using race-neutral goals and things of that nature. So when they're all working together, hopefully, you have a program where you've got race and gender-conscious measures in place that are narrowly tailored and you can use while you need them. But you also have other things in place that are helping small businesses build up and become more competitive for this work, working at the same time. And it also avoids problems like you often see with, with lots of programs where prime contractors also get comfortable with the same minority and women-owned businesses. So the same four or five minority and women-owned businesses benefit from these types of programs. But there are ways to sort of avoid that so you get different types of businesses that they're using for different types of work. So it's really a combination of all of that that hopefully results in sort of sustainable use of minority and women-owned businesses over time.
Right. Okay, thank you. It, it does get to this culture idea that it's not just one thing, right? It's not just one strategy, it's all of the strategies.
Yeah.
To create an environment where we are a welcoming organization to minority and women-owned businesses. So thanks again for the information, and thanks to the partners in the room.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you for the privilege of doing this work.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple comments, because they stirred up just a little bit of stuff for me. Administration, I want to thank them because I thought that Robert Bell was here. You came in '18. I came right at the beginning of '19. I thought you were here because I was coming. That I was going to raise sand about inclusion. But obviously, the administration already knew that there was an issue, and we need to deal with it. And so I thank Robert for all his hard work by himself and now adding on some staff to, to bring us to this point. But I want to also thank Jeff for recognizing that there was an issue that we needed to, to deal with. Just specifically, and you don't have to really answer this now, but the role of MSDGC. As we look at subcontract, they're like off the chart for Asian-American-owned and Black-American-owned for subcontracts. And I, I would just like to know, was that a trajectory that they were gradually going up? Or did they know we were, that we were kind of stirring the pot about, are you doing what you need to do? You know, was it through five years of time? Or did this just happen like the last year or two?
I'll have to get you details on that. So I don't off the top of my head in time where that participation came from. But, you know, in aggregate at least, I would suspect that it's, it's not uncommon when you have a small business program, for example, or a large project that may have been awarded during your study period, that you get these chunks going to particular businesses that happen to be Black American or Asian-American or, or another group. Part of that could be the small business goals that MSD is using. But I, I would just need more details about when that work took place and what contracts.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
But we can get that to you.
Okay. And the question came up, how fast do we move? Well, we've identified that this is a priority for us. So how fast we move is the board makes that decision. And we, it's a priority for us, and we give clear direction to administration of how we're going to move forward to make that happen. So I thank all of you for your hard work. It's been very helpful. And we're going to get busy. So thank you so much. Robert, did you want to make a?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ms. Bier. Of course.
Just want to add, yeah, we're, we're going to be sending you a list of, we distilled the, what?
No, go on.
We distilled the, 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 the recommendations into a list of 25. You're going to be getting that in a couple of days. I'm working with Jeff right now to kind of lay out a timeline that we wanted to present to you guys and what it would entail, probably around first of next week. And then, and then we'll start from there. We, we're not going to sit on this. We want to move as quickly as we can. I want to get you, you know, because the biggest thing is, is to determine what recommendations we want to move forward with right now. We may not want all 25, but some of the things, Commissioner Reese, that you mentioned, too, and that, that you mentioned is in there. The unbundling and all that kind of thing. And so we need from you, what are your priorities? And so that's what we're going to be working on starting next week and hopefully get that settled pretty quick so that we can then move into, you know, looking at which ones and then developing the resolutions, developing the strategies and that kind of thing. So you'll hear from us next week.
Yeah, and I wanted to know who picked this picture.
They did.
That was you? Because when you look at us like Bloom and Doom, you should have had something like Bright. You know what I'm saying? But that's okay.
I wanted the words to pop.
Oh, is that what you wanted?
Actually darker than the one.
Oh. Okay.
The other, the other thing I wanted to add is, this is, we're in a perfect time because we, you know, all the stuff that we need to do, the follow-up that Commissioner Drew House was talking about, and how do we measure and stuff, we're going to be, we're, you know, we're this, in the next, this year, we're going to have procurement and economic inclusion software that, that's going to give us a lot of that stuff that we're looking at to do and monitor from all, so subcontract, the, you know, different tier levels of subcontract, prime contracts, payments, payroll, all the kind, all that kind of, and really be, really be collaborative, you know, be, be coordinated within the whole organization so different departments are not just doing some different things. So we're really looking forward to that, and we've, we've planned this. We've planned it to, to merge all this stuff together because we know we're going to need it.
Yeah, you can see the work that's been done, for sure.
And brighter pictures, for sure.
Brighter pictures, yeah. Thank you all so much. We're going to move forward, too. We have agenda item four and five. I'm going to read them separately. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G3, to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning MSD. And then item number five, a motion to go to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, to discuss collective bargaining.
Second, Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Madam President, if I could just very briefly, there will likely be action after the final executive session. I don't expect these to take very long, but just for the, of other folks in the room who may want to stay around.
Right. Right. Okay.[321.31]
...a session with no action being taken, but at this point I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 20, representing security specialists one and two at Paul Brown Stadium, served case number 2021-MED-01-0041.
Second, Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to close our regular meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you so much.[1754.89][1754.89](applause)[1755.89][1755.89](end of transcript)[1756.89][1756.89](end of transcript)